Good morning, everyone, and today is Tuesday, October 25th. Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors Quarterly Meeting in Lake Tahoe area. Appreciate all of the county staff and board that come up here once a quarter to make sure that we are meeting with our constituents in this area. And we're going to start this morning with a flag salute. Supervisor Weigant is going to lead us. This will be his last official meeting in Lake Tahoe for the board. He has a couple months to go, but I just wanted to make mention of his 28 years of service here on the Board of Supervisors and 39 in total with all of the committees and commissions he's served on for the county. So with that, Supervisor Weigant, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment this morning. This is for items that, I'm sorry, I skipped over consent agenda. Let's go to consent agenda first. Are there any board members who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull 11B.
11B.
And I would like to pull C1.
Must be a first number on that C1.
Well, now I have to look. I'm sure there is.
It's 12C1.
12C1, 12C1.
Okay, 12C1. Any other items? Okay, then with that, any members of the public have any items on consent they would like to speak to?
No, not on consent.
Yeah, this is on consent first. Okay, nothing on consent. Then I'll come back to the board. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the remaining consent agenda items?
Approve of remaining items?
And I'll second. Supervisors Holmes and Gore. And this is a roll call vote. Megan, Gore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
So we'll go to item 11B on the consent calendar. Supervisor Weigant?
Yeah, obviously, it's an out-of-state travel request, and those historically have typically come to the board. And so it's a trip that I think is an important trip, and I'm a strong advocate of doing those kinds of trips. But I'm thinking that as a result of this request, that we might want to consider having some kind of framework or standards by which we, some culture as it relates to how we decide what the makeup and the cost should be to the taxpayers. So it's a large group that is going and for which the county is being funded, and it's the first time for a trip like this and maybe any that I've seen a planning commissioner identified as one of the attendees. So I thought at least we should talk about that and have a conversation about that policy.
Thank you. Any other board members wish to comment on this item?
It's a question regarding the number of people that are attending the conference in the nation's capital.
Is the question the number? Well, I think, I'll weigh in. I think it's a question both of the number and then how we select who attends. And I think we should have a policy with a budget for the board and for our staff so that each office can choose which meetings and travel that they feel is critical for out-of-state travel. For some of us, this is the second time this year going back to Washington, and then not all planning commissioners were offered the opportunity. So I think, I think we need to set a policy in our governance manual like we would ask of any staff to make sure that we're using the taxpayers' money judiciously. I would support that concern.
Maybe if I could add that, overall, these years, I've seen it happen sort of both ways, if you will. So I remember one time on a cap-to-cap trip, literally down to the wire, no one from the county was going. So the county exec actually came to me. I happened to be chair, and I was planning on going that year because I didn't have anything personally that needed to be addressed back there. Of course, we're always busy, but, so the result of that conversation was that a couple of us ended up going, so we were sort of understaffed, if you will. But I think the policy, what we might ask is to have a conversation about making sure there's a representation from the county for whatever trip is being discussed that matches the purpose of the trip. So our resources essentially, I think, should target that, and then the taxpayers would know we're being good custodians of those funds. So we all have our items and initiatives that we're working on, and then the county as a whole has those, and the staff resources and the investment in that, I think, ought to be congruent. So another example, there was a year where I actually went right after cap-to-cap, which was kind of unusual. And it was early in my career, but it was a result of the fact that NACO had, we had just adopted Placer Legacy as our open space policy. And as a result of that, NACO had offered an invitation to us to make a presentation at their national conference in DC. So the planning director and I packed up and went literally some weeks after we had just gotten back from, from the cap-to-cap trip. And so the county exec felt strongly about that and took it back to the board for consideration. But I, I think there should be some guidelines at least as we go forward.
Yeah, I have no objection to that.
And, and I would agree with the comments. I think this is maybe the first time we've had a planning commissioner attend, and I'm not sure why a planning commissioner would attend. I certainly understand why our, my colleagues would plan to attend, or maybe, like I'm asking my district director to attend since I'm unable to attend. Not sure why we would have a planning commissioner attend.
Mr. Dematte is a longtime agriculture, in, in the business of agriculture. He's run 5,000-acre farms. Now he's got a 40-acre farm in Penrin. You know, the last board meeting, we talked about Senator Nielsen, talked about Congressman Lamalva, we had Placer grown, we talked about the importance of agriculture in Placer County. There was just a workshop called Crops to Cul-de-sac that spoke about the encroachment of urbanization on agriculture. And so I think it's important for a planning commissioner that has that strong background to join us in DC.
And I appreciate that clarification. I think that we as a board though need to make those decisions together. And so I, I agree that we should have a policy discussion in the future so that we can actually decide how we make these decisions about out-of-state travel.
I agree with that.
With that, I'll move approval of the item.
Second?
Yes, so I have a motion second, but we do need to take public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom?
I see none.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
And I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So one abstention. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to item 12C1. This is the North Auburn Municipal Advisory Council appointment.
Thank you. I'm the one who pulled it, and as I read it, I was just going through my pack, and I noticed that the, the appointee for the MAC, and I don't have a problem with the appointee, by the way, I think that's absolutely fine, but the appointee was requested by Supervisor Holmes. So I was a little confused and took a look at the North Auburn MAC, which, in my mind, now because of redistricting, resides in District 5. So I was trying to understand our processes, and it's come to my understanding that we haven't changed the MAC maps and the representatives of those maps based on, on redistricting. So I had Clayton Cook give me some update, but I'm still a little confused because we haven't actually updated our maps to coincide with the redistricting. And I don't know if there's anybody here who can talk about that, but I would appreciate it because I do think that we should, now that we've had the process of redistricting, make sure everything's in line with the redistricting.
Thank you. And I, I wanted to point out that Supervisor Holmes and myself jointly interviewed the candidate, and both agreed. How this appears on our agenda was a surprise to me, but it doesn't matter. The appointment is fine. So I also asked about the maps and the changes, and apparently somewhere after redistricting, staff was told by our former CEO not to continue on that process. I think we absolutely need our committees and commissions and MACs all should be adjusted at the time of redistricting because to have it linger out just creates this question mark, like who, who represents that area. So I would like to ask staff to move on with that process now.
Sure, but I'd like to chime in on that, too, because after having some research done, some legal research, it came to my attention with the, with the redistricting, our districts were drawn and they were codified late, late January, Karen, something like that. But there's a law that says that the former supervisor that represented that district still has a duty to represent those people.
Oh, absolutely.
And at the same time, we as the new representative have a duty to represent them as well. So there's kind of an overlap for those people, and that is in law. So technically, yes, we should change and adjust them, but...
We handled it then appropriately, both of us swinging in on this appointment. But I think, to Supervisor Gore's point, we should make it clear for the public where, which district it now resides in because the districts are formalized.
Definitely. And that's why I'm going to now MACs that I'm a part of, I share with you and Supervisor Holmes, to get to know the people that are in my district because in next, in two years, they'll be voting for me instead of for you. So we have to introduce ourselves to our new constituents as well.
Absolutely.
I asked Clayton, Clayton Cook from my office to attend virtually, so if you would like him to respond to that. That's actually an Attorney General opinion regarding serving your district that was in effect before redistricting. But if you'd like Clayton to respond to any of this, he's here.
Certainly. Well, that's a...
I think that'd be helpful, so that we all understand it.
Sure, yes.
You bet.
Thank you, Karen. Yes, and what Karen mentioned, that's completely correct. There was some confusion on this until July of this year when the Attorney General opinion, what it indicates is, is that, yes, new district boundaries were drawn and were in effect in January of 2022, but any supervisors that, that were in place in the middle of their terms at that time, until the end of their term, may electorally accountable to that existing district. So they actually are representing in some sense their existing district, but also that new district that, that has been redefined. And that goes until the end of their term. Once they get to the end of their term, then it switches over to the new district. And the reason for that Attorney General opinion is that if there were a recall or a vacancy at the office, that election would actually be run by the prior district boundaries. So it basically stays in place. And part of that issue is we've got scheduled elections in county supervisor roles, and the redistricting occurs at a point in time. So you do have this overlap period until you get to the next term where there is a bit of, I guess, complicated identification of district boundaries.
Did you have any other comments?
No other comments. That's helpful, right? So now that I've been reelected to my district, which is a new district, I have a smaller district, I represent those folks, and then the folks in the, in District 2, which was mine now are under District 2.
But you're still obligated to, to represent them. It's like a...
Well, until the end of my most recent term, which is right now. So it wouldn't be another, another two years. But regardless, I'm going to represent residents in Roseville, no matter who you are, so that's not a problem, or all of the counties, it's not a problem. I think just some clarification on the maps in the future, how we move forward with the maps for the MACs, I think would be helpful. So I appreciate the clarification, Clayton. It's a little confusing, and so I appreciate that, and it's very helpful.
Would you like to move approval? Public comment? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Any on Zoom? Okay.
All right, now we'll go ahead and make approval of the item.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Then we'll go back to our next item on the agenda, which is our public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public to speak to us on the item not on today's agenda. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes per person and understand that the board cannot take action on any requests we hear today, but we are happy to hear your comments. So sir, I know we have one here. If there's anyone else in the room, please go ahead and come up. Welcome and good morning.
Hi, good morning. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name's Seth Howard. I'm a field rep with Northern California Carpenters Union. I'm also a 19-year resident in the Tahoe Basin, homeowner, and I've raised three dogs with my wife in the area. So I don't want to take up much of your time, but I just want to briefly tell you about core values of the Carpenters Union. We're trying to get the word out there in some areas where people don't know what we do. We represent approximately 38,000 carpenters in Northern California, over 1,200 contractors in Northern California. Some of our core values, we have a straight accredited apprenticeship program. Every other month, our apprentices go to school for a week. We graduate, I believe, around 2,000 to 3,000 apprentices a year from our program. Local hire, pretty self-explanatory, so our members don't have to be driving down to Sacramento to work and vice versa, people driving up here. And a big one is health insurance. All of our working members receive a platinum-style plan with vision, medical, and dental. And a personal issue I have is, so like when these public works projects are awarded, contractors aren't required to carry health insurance for their employers working, they just have to pay a certain amount to the people to get that. And let's be honest, most people in that position, they do not get insurance. The job ends, let's say they get hurt, you know, they go to hospital, we're all paying for it. So just something, I just want to, just briefly tell you what we're all about, and maybe in the future, you guys could keep that in the back of your minds when awarding contracts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Appreciate your testimony this morning, and it was a good refresher on our union. Are there any other public comments? I'm not seeing anyone in the room jump up. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to address the board?
I see none on Zoom.
Okay, well, thanks for a quiet morning, and we're ahead of schedule now. I'll try to keep us going there. So we're going to go to department items, and we'll start with item number six on our agenda. This is page, found on page 111 of our board packet. This is Health and Human Services, the Urgency Ordinance for the Mosquito Fire Debris Removal Program. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Gustafson, board. Jason Philippe, Health and Human Services, Deputy Director with Environmental Health and Animal Services. Today, I will be requesting your board to adopt an urgency ordinance to set the framework for the safe and comprehensive removal of debris and debris ash from residential property that's resulting from the mosquito fire. As you may know, the mosquito fire started on September 6th and has reached 76,290 acres in size. It destroyed 19 residences and 17 utility buildings and damaged another three residences and two utility buildings in Placer County. County staff have already worked with state partners to remove all apparent and readily removable household hazardous waste. And the California Conservation Corps, upon county OES request, installed temporary erosion control around burnt structures to mitigate, to mitigate contaminant runoff from properties. With these emergency measures in place, the next step in the recovery process is to safely remove debris, remaining contaminants, hazardous trees, and install, an installation of erosion control so properties in our impacted communities are ready to rebuild. You may recall, your board approved an urgency ordinance for the 2021, 2021 River Fire to support a debris removal program. The River Fire project was largely run by state debris removal contractors. There is a difference this year. Because wildfires in the state were less prevalent and not with the same dispersment across the state as compared to recent years, the state determined locals were better suited to manage debris removal in most situations, including our counties. The state is offering technical assistance and potential reimbursement for qualifying expenses if we pursue a county-led debris removal program. This ordinance I am presenting to you today would establish the framework to prepare a county-run debris removal, debris removal plan. If you approve this ordinance, staff would return to your board at a later date with a detailed debris removal plan and costs for your approval. Staff's initial cost estimates for this project are approximately $2 million, and our CalOES partners indicated this project would be eligible for 75% reimbursement. And if, if staff run this project, they would hire a private debris removal contractors to do the work. I should note, this ordinance also includes a provision for alternative program for property owners that wish to clear debris from their property with their own contractors at their own expense, and this was a similar option that was included with the River Fire Urgency Ordinance. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions. And Dave Atkinson is here for questions as well.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. Are there questions, board members? I do. I'll ask a quick one, and it may be more for Dave or yourself. In the River Fire, we had a few individuals who determined they wanted to contract independently and do their own private. How, what was that percentage of those 47 homes?
If I remember correctly, Jason, we had three properties that chose to go with the alternative program of their own, with their own finances and their own contractor.
And have you had any contact with the individuals from the mosquito fire to get a sense of how many might choose that alternative?
We haven't presented that specifically, but from the data we did collect at the local assistance center, the majority of the properties are either uninsured or underinsured. So I think that is partially what is informing our decision to continue to move forward with this, just, just in terms of the, the number of folks who we think would, would take advantage of this.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate the help for those folks, and, and I do know in talking to some of the individuals at that, at that very emotional event, that a number of the individuals indicated they were underinsured for the situation. Okay.
Yep.
Not seeing any other board questions. Is there any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, then I'd come back for a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Weigant and Jones, all those in favor? Oh, roll call, sorry. Ordinance. Gore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you very much. Look forward to helping those folks out in any way we can. We'll move on to item 7A on our agenda. This is page 121 of our packet. Matt Randall's here to talk about road maintenance equipment purchases.
Good morning, board members. Happy to be here. Matt Randall with the Department of Public Works Road Maintenance Division. So the action before you is asking you to approve a fiscal year 2223 budget amendment, which is AM 00714 for cost center 19007, which is the road maintenance budget, in the amount of $3,677,000. So a little bit of background on this one, as you know, the Road Maintenance Division, we have a fleet of construction equipment, and it provides services all over the county, patching potholes, responding to emergencies, snow removal. And traditionally, we budget about $1.5 to $1.6 million a year to replace old and aging equipment. Last year, we had some, some orders that actually, actually were delayed because of supply chain issues. So we had a, a fuel tank at Burton Creek and a couple of hook loaders that we ordered that still have yet to be delivered. And then this year, after the budget was approved, in starting the procurement processes, process for this year's equipment, more supply chain issues with potential delays in equipment of up to 36 months in some cases. So what this budget amendment will do is give us the ability to place orders for, for road maintenance equipment so that it can be delivered the year that we need it, and then also so that we can lock in prices to avoid escalations, which was another issue that we've been seeing the last 12 to 18 months. So at this point, too, just want to direct your attention to the, to the attachment, and just, just a couple of quick words, lots of details here, but on the left-hand side is a list of equipment and prices organized by fiscal year. If you go to the far right-hand side, it actually has the dates where we're wanting to, the, the equipment delivered. So all we did was back out, based on the lead times we're hearing from vendors, when we would need to order the equipment. And we have equipment all the way to 24, 25, 23, 24 that we want to deliver this, we want to order this year, which is how we came up with that $3.6 million for the budget amendment. So and all of this is funded, traditionally, again mentioned, the budget year, we typically are about $1.5 to $1.6 million in our budget. You'll notice that's about what the plan is here, and it's funded with our highway user tax account funds, which is the gas tax, and also our MRA funds, which is our SB1 funds. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Matt. Appreciate that. Are there any questions, board members? Not seeing any. Any public comment on this item? Not seeing any here in the room? Any on Zoom? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Holmes and Weigant, and this is a roll call. Gore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Matt.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then to item 7B. This is the State Route 89 Fanny Bridge Community Revitalization Project. This is found on page 125 of our board packet. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Chair Gustafson, members of the board. Ryan Decker, Engineering Manager with the Department of Public Works in the Tahoe Engineering Division, here today to request the following actions related to the SR89 Fanny Bridge Community Revitalization Project. To authorize the Director of Public Works to approve a modification to the funding agreement with FHWA Central Federal Lands Division to provide $6,500,000 in local match funding for the SR89 project. Authorize the Director of Public Works to approve a STBG loan reimbursement agreement for the SR89 Fanny Bridge project that includes an advance of $1.447 million in traffic mitigation fee funding from the county's capital improvement program, followed by reimbursement of the local advance with STBG funding. Approve a budget amendment, AM 00720, for the project in the amount of $2.947 million. And finally, approve a budget amendment, AM 00722, for the Tahoe Economic and Community Enhancement Fund in the amount of $1.5 million cancel reserves and the amount of $1.5 million to enable the transfer of TOT to the project. So as the update we have coming up for item four, we'll get into further, we have additional background and scope and everything else, this one I'll focus mostly on the funding aspects of this project. The Fanny Bridge project is a critical transportation project for the area. It's been in planning and stages of implementation since the 1990s. The project has already completed a first phase of construction and included the new Truckee River Bridge, the SR89 bypass, two new roundabouts, and the new multipurpose trail segments, the Dollar Creek Trail and the Meeks Bay Bike Trail. The remaining elements that remain are converting the signalized Y intersection in Tahoe City to a roundabout, reconstructing Fanny Bridge, and improving SR89 immediately south of the Fanny Bridge. We're calling that the Complete Streets Elements. So the county's been working with our partners at FHWA to fund these improvements. The remaining total cost of the project estimated at $20.7 million. Federal Lands Access Program funding, we call FLAP, is totaling $11.2 million available. It's been allocated to the project. Other funding in the amount of $9.5 million is required to fund the full project scope. However, a reduced scope that includes only the Fanny Bridge reconstruction... It's been allocated to the project. Other funding in the amount of 9.5 million is required to fund the full project scope. However, a reduced scope that includes only the Fanny Bridge reconstruction and Y roundabout would fully leverage the available federal funds available while reducing the immediate funding needs to move forward at this time. This alternative totals approximately 17 million, and with the available 11.2 of FLAP, requires approximately 6 million in other funding to proceed. So today's request allows for the funding necessary to provide for this reduced scope alternative. Department has already secured a state transportation block grant, STBG funding, in the amount of 3 million spread over the next two fiscal years. In order to provide the most flexibility for utilization of these funds, the department today is requesting authorization to enter, into a potential loan reimbursement agreement to advance the future year funds should the project delivery schedule require it. Additionally, the department is requesting to use transient occupancy tax TOT funds from the Tahoe Economic and Community Enhancement Fund in the amount of 1.5 million, to add to the previously approved 1.55 million in traffic mitigation fees for a total of 3.05 million in local funds. This secures the total with the STBG funds of 6.05 million and allows for the funding of that reduced scope alternative. The project was intended to go out to bid this winter with award and construction in 2023, however, recent developments with the federal budget and continuing resolutions have caused FHWA to delay advertisement to next year at this point with construction planned for 2024. However, the department is requesting these actions today in order to be prepared for any potential accelerations in the schedule due to any changes in the federal budget process. We really just want to be ahead of the game and ready in case these funds become fully available to the feds. DPW will continue to pursue funding from a variety of sources to fund the remaining scope. We submitted an active transportation program grant this last summer. We just found out last week, unfortunately, that it was unsuccessful. But with that, we'll continue to pursue alternative sources. Should additional funding not be acquired in time for the FHWA's bid, DPW will pursue the remaining scope independently. So with that, I will, in my presentation, and am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ryan, are there questions? Well, I'm going to have a few. First off, this is a revised scope, and I just wanted to make sure, have we done public outreach? And, and part of this is almost ancient history now, but I'm ancient enough that I remember the history, that we were going to have complete streets south of the Y. That was very important to the community, that we have sidewalks and parking along that segment leading southward on the existing Highway 89?
Yes.
And that's the part being cut. So I'm wondering if the business associations and resort association, if everybody's aware that that's happening.
Right, and it's not being completely cut out, it's being delayed. Unfortunately, we're going to have to phase it as an additional phase, but we have at least alluded to this potentiality in our previous meetings, at the town hall meeting we held in Kings Beach, and in a couple other meetings that we've had with TCDA and LTRA, et cetera. But this has been kind of evolving even in the last few weeks.
Okay.
Since I submitted our staff report, even, there have been updates. And so, we're getting ourselves ready for this potentiality, and I think the writing's on the wall, but it hasn't been completely determined. So, as this becomes more clear, which it is as of today becoming more clear, this is really the first venue that we've had to really put the word out that this is what may or may not be happening.
Okay.
But we will continue to do so and go out to additional outreach venues.
There used to be, and this is also ancient history, there used to be an EEM program at which Caltrans would help fund, or the CTC would help fund environmental enhancements to highway projects so that you did get complete streets, it was before complete streets, so I don't know if it even still exists. But I know it helped us with funding bike trails in the region and other elements that were sometimes not eligible for other funding. I, I just really want to proceed with this complete project. The community's been waiting patiently, and not so patiently, for those roundabouts to get, the final roundabout and Fanny Bridge to get done, and now to further change the scope, and then hope that someday we'll, we'll finish is, is difficult. So, so.
Understood.
Look for all funding we can, and it may come back to local sources, and there, you know, we should consider just expediting and getting it done, and it will only cost more if we wait. So, at some point, we may just have to look for other allocations from our TOT revenues to get that project complete. But I certainly want the business community weighing in on that and making sure I'm still in alignment with where they were at during all the public testimony many years ago. It may have changed, and, and that might not be as much of importance to the general community, but until we get out and talk to people about that, we don't know, so.
We will do that.
Yeah, so if we can get out with our town hall that's coming up, maybe, I'm looking at Stephanie and others so that we can get the word out on that. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just as another supervisor and one who lives in a, most of the time in a much lower elevation, just amplify Cindy's comments, and I know staff is on this because of the tremendous success I've seen over the years, but transportation projects, you know, typically are thought of, and used to be in my head, transportation projects, you know, cars and bicycles, but up here, if you look at the Tahoe City Downtown Improvement Program, and then the same in Kings Beach, they actually are a huge way to, to amplify the resources and the, and the livability of these communities. So things like those sidewalks and the impact of roundabouts, not only on traffic flow, but that the feel people have when they come and visit and those who live here is, is really, really important. So I know you guys work overtime thinking that, but I think it's good to say and echo on a, in a public way, and just emphasize.
Thanks.
Thank you, Robert. Are there any public comments on this item? Not seeing any in the room?
I see the online.
And none online? Okay. So with that, I entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Gore and Weigant, and I was just double checking, it is a roll call, and one motion is adequate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for all four actions, thank you. Megan, will you call the roll?
Absolutely.
Gore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ryan. We'll move back to our 9:30 timed item now. This is item one on our agenda, found on page one of our packet, approval of the Lincoln Sewer Maintenance District One wastewater authority joint powers agreement. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Gustafson, members of your board, I'm Kevin Bell, the Assistant Director of Public Works. And I'm here this morning to talk about LISWA and a JPA approval between the county and the city of Lincoln.
How are we going to say it? LISWA, is that what you said?
LISWA is how it's been pronounced so far.
I'm trying to learn all my county acronyms, so I just want to make.
Open to other suggestions.
Okay.
Or not open to other suggestions?
And the pronunciation, yeah, yeah, right. We're done with that discussion.
Okay, to go with WAMMA, okay.
We're going with LISWA. So, on September 27th, I was before your board to provide an informational update on the progress and provide a history of regionalization in general, and specifically how we got to regionalization with SMD1 through the COJA, or the Construction and Joint Exercise of Power Agreement, with construction of the regional infrastructure that included a pump station pipeline from North Auburn down to the city of Lincoln, and expansion of a treatment plant in the city of Lincoln to accommodate the flows from North Auburn. And that construction was completed in 2016. So today, I'm not going to go back and cover that history of regionalization and how we got here, and more going to focus on where we are today and, and where we're hoping to move forward over the next few weeks and months. So, this figure here shows the Lincoln wastewater treatment plant. And it, if you look closely, you can see a clarifier, which is this round object here, and then a long skinny asset that's actually an oxidation ditch. And it, it, you also can see there is a lot of space around the wastewater treatment plant. And so it is laid out in such a way to expand from the current capacity of 5.9 MGD to up over 20 MGD. The main components of a treatment train are the oxidation ditch that I pointed out and a clarifier, and I'll expand on that later. But under the, the COJA, as I mentioned, that one clarifier and oxidation ditch was constructed. Over, or since 2016, there has been growth in the area in both the city of Lincoln and in the county, and, and both the city and the county have some pre-purchased capacity. But with the expansion, or with the growth that has occurred, we're nearing capacity of that treatment plant. We do believe that there is adequate capacity barely for the pre-purchased units, but, but we're at a point in time where we need to expand the treatment plant. To construct the full treatment train along with some of the other necessary components, we're looking at a cost of approximately $59 million. If we were to construct a full project, which would be the oxidation ditch and the clarifier, it's $59 million, and, and we do not have $59 million in the bank, so some kind of debt service is going to be required in order to fund that expansion. So with the need for the expansion, which is not addressed in the COJA, as well as fixed charges that, being paid by the county currently, not fully covering the city's expenses for the treatment, and the fact that the COJA, the existing COJA, a large majority of that document covered the initial construction of the regional facilities, there's been a desire to, to move on from the COJA and, and look to what, where do we need to be, what do we need to put in place to make this sustainable moving forward? In addition, the repair and rehabilitation costs right now are handled separately, so the county pays a fee to the city of Lincoln on a per EDU basis, and then as R and R projects occur, there's a separate cost that comes to the county, and so there, that, those costs go up and down year to year, and so it does make it a little bit difficult to, to budget. And in the end, how the COJA was structured, it set it up to where it was kind of a, a city versus county perspective, rather than a sustainable unified approach. And so, it resulted in some disagreements on funding and projects and how things should be handled. And so, to work through some of those issues and some of those disagreements, an oversight committee, as well as a technical advisory committee, were formed about a year ago, a little over a year ago, and they began working on, on how do we, how do we create something that's sustainable moving forward? And so in the end, we came up with, or at the beginning of this process, came up with these principles, which include this all for one and one for all, so there's no distinction between a city EDU versus a county EDU. All EDUs are going to be treated the same regardless of jurisdictional boundaries, they're just EDUs of this new treatment entity. It would align our interests, so if, if there's something that's good for one partner, it would be good for the other partner, and if it's bad for one partner, it's bad for the other partner, so we're in this together. It results in shared obligations and responsibilities, so basically, for, for the existing and future system, for all ratepayers. And, and these principles, in the end, help align our interests so that we can put our energy into solving problems, which there always are going to be problems and, and challenges with the wastewater treatment facility, and spend that energy on finding solutions rather than trying to position each, ourselves to, to see how we can get the best deal for our own ratepayers. So, once the principles were in place, there was discussion about how best to implement those. As an example, the question of, should it be a JPA, should we just have a new contract, should we modify the COJA and keep that as the model for moving forward? There are pros and cons to all of those options, as we discussed with the oversight committee. We did come to the conclusion, as the oversight committee in tag, that we'd recommend a JPA for a few reasons that results in, you know, further aligning our interests, has a shared responsibility, equal treatment of all the customers of the JPA. And so, in, in the end, we, we decided to go ahead and recommend this, this JPA. Some of the next steps that we took were to engage outside counsel that specializes in JPA formation. We are in the process of selecting a potential GM, should this be approved and move forward. We have done some interviews and have a couple of candidates in mind, but one, once, or if this is approved, then the, the new board would make the final selection for the NRM GM and the Finance Director. So we need to establish the JPA, and then transfer assets, and then LISWA, LISWA, will need to establish charges, and then move forward to construct the, the expansion. So the draft JPA, or the proposed JPA is included in the staff report. Some of the main business points are that the JPA would own and operate the regional wastewater facilities, would be able to employ agents and employees, be able to establish charges or other costs in connection with the regional facilities, would be able to charge the county and the city on a proportionate basis, based on the number of EDUs within each respective jurisdiction. Would develop and adopt policies and procedures. It'd be governed by this LISWA board, which would be made up of two members of the Placer County Board of Supervisors and two members of the City of Lincoln City Council. And it would have the authority to change the agreement and change some of these, these main changes on a unanimous basis, not a simple majority. So, going back to the expansion, real quick, as I pointed out earlier, full treatment train includes an oxidation ditch and a clarifier. There are also some other ancillary facilities that need to be constructed with whatever project we do first, that include filters and a DAFT and some other pumps and things like that. So as the two, two by two and tag have been working together, we've identified a couple of different scenarios for how the expansion could move forward. One is to construct the entire project at once, which would be a $59 million project. And then the other would be to split up the oxidation ditch, or the clarifier, and do either the oxidation ditch or the clarifier first. As you can see, each of those projects result in a different number of EDUs that would be provided for with those projects, as well as different costs associated with those projects. If Project A, which would be the oxidation ditch, is constructed first, we're looking at $43 million and, and about 8,000 EDUs that would be provided for. If the clarifier is constructed first, we're, we're looking at about $35 million and 4,000 EDUs. And again, you, if you look at the 43 and the 35, you can't add those two together because there are components that have to be constructed with the first project, whichever project we do first, and so, the total is still $59 million. Once you build everything, it's $59 million. So looking at which, which project to do, how to, how to build this out, there are pros and cons. If we build either Project A or B first, there's, or construct it all together, there's an overall lower cost because between now and whenever the second project is built, inflation will happen, so that second project, over time, will, the cost will inflate. But if we do it all right now, then all of that cost gets borne by our existing customers, and so the existing ratepayers end up having a higher burden for the debt service associated with a full project. So if we split the two projects, or split it into two projects, we have the lower initial cost, lower initial treatment charge, and then the, the next project would be fully funded by connection fees. So then you've got development funding that, that expansion rather than having the existing customers pay it. So, there is a, a higher overall cost to do that because of the inflation between now and whenever the next project is constructed. And for the timing, if we do the clarifier that provides about 4,000 EDUs, we're looking at the next project needing to occur 2027, 28, somewhere in that timeframe. If we do the oxidation ditch first, we're looking at somewhere around 2031, 32, somewhere in there, again, depending on how, how fast development occurs in both jurisdictions. So looking at the, the charges and expansion financing, the county and city staff have worked together to develop a pro forma, includes approximately $7.3 million per year, and O and M. It includes approximately $7.3 million per year in O and M expenses, of which 89% are direct operational costs. The R and R expenses that I talked about before, planning to build those into the, the overall cost for the JPA at about $500,000 per year. And then the annual debt service of approximately $3.2 million, assuming the, the Phase 1 or the, the oxidation ditch, so that's the $43 million project, 30-year financing at five and a half percent. With construction costs and the economy, all of those things may change between now and when it's constructed, so these costs are approximate until we get bids and until we see what the actual interest rates that we're able to achieve, those, those can fluctuate. So how that's, how that plays out in terms of the JPA charges, LISWA will develop their overall costs and then divide that cost by the number of EDUs in each jurisdiction, and then send a bill to each jurisdiction for their proportionate share of the cost. And then the, each of those jurisdictions will then build that into their own rates and charge their rates, including their own collection system costs to their customers. So looking at the, the cost breakdown, we have approximately $20, $21 per month, per EDU for the O and M expenses. R and R is about $1.42 per EDU per month. And then the debt-related expenses is $12.41, based on the assumptions that I just talked about, resulting in a total of $34.56 per month, per EDU. And you'll notice that that $12 is a pretty substantial portion of that, that $34.56 number, so that, that expansion is, is driving a big part of that, that rate. So going back to the, the pump station and pipeline, currently, the city of Lincoln owns and operates the pump station and pipeline from North Auburn down to the city of Lincoln. With this proposal, the county would take, take back the ownership and operation of that treatment, or the pump station and pipeline. Currently, that's operated by a contract operator on behalf of the city of Lincoln that the county ultimately pays for. And we are proposing to extend that contract for a year, so that the county can evaluate bringing it in-house, looking at some of the expenses. We believe we may be able to save some money by doing it in-house, because we already have equipment and staff that are trained to do this kind of thing. We have pump stations that are this size and force mains in quite a few areas in the county. Or we may, we, once we look at it, we may decide that it makes more sense to continue this contract. But, but for the first year, it allows us to evaluate, and then if we do decide to bring it in-house, allows us to train our staff, so they're ready to take it over at that point in time. The current cost of that contract is approximately $1 million, and that includes the utilities and everything. And then the, there's an emergency storage pond, pretty large emergency storage pond that we would propose to line as well, just to provide a better barrier to groundwater if we have to use that emergency storage basin. The cost of that is approximately $700,000, and we do have some ARP dollars that are set aside to help fund that project. So what does this, what does this mean for our rate payers? Currently, our, our rate is 95.78 per month, per EDU. The, if you look at the collection systems operation cost there, that 29.40 is our local piece of the cost. There's a 4.99 that is our local collection system R and R. We have the regional project operations of 27.64, the regional R and R, so that's for the treatment plant in Lincoln. And then we have an existing SRF loan that's 29.25 that funded the pipeline, pump station, and the treatment expansion at Lincoln. Now, if you look at the future, you can see the collection system operations cost goes up from 29 to 39. That's as a result of us taking an expense that we were currently, or currently paying to the city of Lincoln in that 27.64 number, and pulling it back to our local collection system. So it results in a $10 increase, but it's really just shifting costs from that regional item up to our local collection system. The regional project operations, you see, goes from 27 to 34. You don't see a $12 increase there from the debt service, because right now, as I mentioned, the pump station and pipeline operations cost is built into that 27, so that's being shifted up. And then the R and R goes from 4.50 down to zero, because that's being built into that 34.56 as well, resulting in an approximate rate of $108 per month, per EDU. So why, you know, why, why do we want to do this? Moving into the future, this, this is going to set us up so that the charges are adequately set to be sustainable. It aligns our interests with the city of Lincoln, so we're not arguing about how, how this should be funded, who's going to pay for what, and what the real costs are for, for the, the project, for the expansion. It helps us fund the expansion. It also incorporates the rehab and repair projects into that overall cost, so that helps us with our budgets and stabilizing our rates. After this expansion is paid for, these charges will be, will be stabilized, so they, in theory, could come down, although over time, you know, they, whether they're actually going to be lower 30 years from now when the funding, or the, the debt is paid back is, you know, we'll, we'll see at that time. But future expansions, if, if we're able to do this, future expansions will be funded by future connection fees, so they will no longer be borne by the, the existing rate payers. And then ultimately, it, it's sustainable, it aligns our interests with the city, so it'll be a sustainable, sustainable organization with sustainable rates moving forward. I do want to mention, before we go into the actions requested, that we do have city representatives online, as well as Claire Collins, who is our outside counsel, who did a lot of the heavy lifting on the draft, drafting of the JPA agreement. Want to mention, you know, over the last year, the relationship and the discussions that we've had with the city of Lincoln, both at the oversight committee, with the city council members and board members, as well as city staff, have been very productive, very, very cooperative. And it was a change from what it was a year and a half ago, when it was pretty contentious. And so it's been great working with Sean Scully and Nita and Angela Frost on the city of Lincoln's side to get to this point. It's been a lot of work, but it's been a very good relationship over the last year. And so I want to acknowledge that and let them know that we appreciate that. And then I am going to talk about the actions requested briefly, and then I, I believe some folks may want to say some things. So the actions requested before you this morning are to approve the Lincoln Sewer Maintenance District 1 Wastewater Authority Joint Powers Agreement and authorize the chair to execute the agreement subject to county council and risk management concurrence. Appoint two supervisors and one alternate to serve as members of the Lincoln Sewer Maintenance District 1 Wastewater Authority Board of Directors. Approve the assumption by the county of the existing city of Lincoln Consulting Services contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services to operate and maintain the Sewer Maintenance District 1 Regional Pipeline and Pump Station for a period not to exceed one year, and authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute assignment documents subject to county council and risk management concurrence. And finally, authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute such documents and take, take such actions as are necessary to implement the Lincoln Sewer Maintenance District 1 Wastewater Authority Joint Powers Agreement. So with that, I'll turn it back to your board.
Thank you, Kevin. Great presentation, and I, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. Partnerships are built onto a communication, and you've brought this whole effort forward with your leadership and dedication to resolving the issue, so really appreciate that. I know we have two of our city council member partners online. Do any of our board members want to speak first, or, yes?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Holmes?
I just want to thank county staff, Ken Grimm and Kevin Bell and Robin for their leadership in working with the city, and particularly Rob Sandman and county council. It's been a rough go for me, but I appreciate the hard work you put in to protect the rate payers in, in North Auburn. And I appreciate the work that the city manager, Sean Scully, has done to bring us all together. So, again, it's been a painful process for me, but I think it's the best that we could have done, so thank you all for that.
Thank you. I'm not seeing other, oh, yes, Supervisor Wiegant.
Yeah, I want to, I want to have an exhaustive and intense debate about the name LISWA. I think we should make sure that that is thoroughly vetted. Just kidding. So I, I just want to add to Jim's comments. I know, obviously, the, been around for a long time, and this issue's had some contention and some honest differences of opinion, so I want to thank my colleagues Bonnie and Jim for their leadership and incredibly committed and hard work to get us to here. And I also want to thank Dan and Holly on the city council in particular, but all staff, you guys and Sean and county council's office. I, my personal view is, we're much stronger doing these kinds of partnerships together. I was really pleased in conversation, hearing from Dan, that his perspective was that we should model this after the WAMMA, another name we should probably exhaustively debate. So there's full collaborative ownership of the asset and management of that asset, because there are jurisdictions who have not been willing just to let go of ownership, but I'm sure that over the long run, that that will, will serve us well. And then the regional model is something, of course, that I've been a strong advocate of and supporter for, and it holds out, I think, promise for much more stable rates, easier compliance with what will be changing and enhanced state regulation. But out on the valley floor, we have tremendous opportunity for using the reclaimed water in an efficient manner, and I think in years to come, that's going to be an important issue. So again, emphasizing mostly thanks to Jim and Bonnie and Dan and Holly and all of the staff that made this come together.
Thank you, Robert. So with that, I'd like to see if Dan or Holly would like to address the board of our Lincoln City Council members.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Holly.
Good, good evening. Yeah, you know what? I just want to echo Supervisor Holmes and Wygant said, I really appreciate all the work that staff has done. Kevin and Ken are amazing, and their staff have been very collaborative and very helpful on our side. Sean coming on board has been just amazing with Nita. I really appreciate Bonnie and Jim and their leadership, and the work that my colleague Dan has done. And all, you know, they've done a lot of work to get me to where I am right now, because it has been a hard road. But I, moving forward, I'm very excited about the partnership with the county, the relationships that we've built, and I'm confident that we're just going to move forward in a positive way, and this is going to get better and better. And I'm excited about this JPA agreement, and I just want to thank you all for your support and all the work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Holly. Appreciate that. Dan, would you like to say a few words as well?
Just a very few. I want to echo what my colleagues on the oversight committee have said. Staff, the, watching the interactions of staff over the last year and a half evolve to a true joint partnership has been an extremely pleasant thing for me. I do want to mention that this equivalent item will be brought to the city council in our next meeting, the first meeting in November, because we felt that we needed to do a little more community outreach, since the size of the asset transfer was quite significant. We want to make sure that community understood the reason for it, the, the ultimate sustainability of the system was at stake. I do hope that this, as WAMMA did, was stayed in the ground, that says this is a viable solution, JPA. With the foundation of the all-for-one, one-for-all, it's just making the ground, so these are looked at as a future viable option.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your comments. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? I'm not seeing any in the room. Anyone else on Zoom? Megan?
I see none, Chair.
Okay. So with that, we have a series of four individual motions to take on this item. The first is to approve the Lincoln Sewer Maintenance District 1 Wastewater Authority Joint Powers Agreement and authorize the chair to execute the agreement subject to county council and risk management concurrence. Do I have a motion? Jones and Wygant, Bonnie, did you want to say, make a comment?
Yeah, I, I didn't have a chance to say this, but, you know, it sounded like this love fest, like, oh, we all worked really hard together, and it was great, and it was really challenging. And it's not easy to work sometimes together with our partners, but what I did see, which I think we'll see more of, is when parties come together for the best interests of our community, we can make things work, and it can be really hard. And it sometimes means getting egos out of the way and jurisdictional feelings out of the way to really make it work best for our community. And I, I think we'll see more of this, more regional partnerships, because it is so expensive to do the work to provide infrastructure for our communities. But I just, I just appreciate working with Supervisor Holmes and, and for the board allowing me the opportunity to, to partner with the city of Lincoln in this way. It's been a challenging but rewarding process, and I look forward to more opportunities to do that. And so now we can take the vote and do the next one.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Megan, will you call the roll? Gore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Then on our second action, we would be appointing two supervisors and one alternate to serve as members of the Lincoln Sewer Maintenance District 1 Wastewater Authority Board of Directors. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Supervisor Wygant of District...
Can you turn on your mic? I'm sorry, Suzanne.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Supervisor Wygant from District 2 and Supervisor Holmes from District 3, since they both have a vested interest in these projects.
Do I have a second?
I'm happy to second that, Robert, if you would like to do that at this point, absolutely. My thought is this, you may not want to continue to serve for the next couple of months, it's up to you, you're happy to, happy to let you do so. What I do think is that District 2 should be the representative, one of the representatives on this board, and I think Supervisor Holmes should as well, especially since now I know that he still is representing the residents of North Auburn until the end of his, his term. So, Robert, what's your desire? Certainly, I'm happy to, to pass the baton on to you.
After I leave the meeting today, I'm never going to come out in public again, so. After leaving Lake Tahoe, I just, seriously, that was a joke. I, I think, I'm happy to do it for a meeting or two, and I think, I was thinking about how we've had recent conversations about committee assignments, and I think what staff might do is consider this committee being made up of the supervisor who represents the rate payers, which is Jim's district, and also where the asset resides, which is District 2. So in that vein, I'm, I'm happy to participate.
Great. And the motion didn't include an alternate. Again, looking to the future, I will be representing, or District 5 will be representing that area, so I'm happy to serve as the alternate if one of the two supervisors, if that's okay? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Supervisor Jones.
And I'll second Supervisor Jones's motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, Megan?
Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I welcome Robert's participation in the next two months, and then as the new board comes into, on board in, in January, maybe we can revisit this discussion.
Okay.
As I think with all of our committees and boards.
Right, okay. Megan? Gore?
Aye.
Wygant? Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson? Gustafson?
Aye.
On number three then, this is a motion to approve the assumption by the county of the existing City of Lincoln Consulting Services contract with Stan Tech Consulting to operate and maintain the sewer maintenance District One Regional Pipeline and Pump Station for a period not to exceed one year and authorize the Director of Public Works or designate, execute assignment documents subject to County Counsel and Risk Management Concurrent. Do I have a motion?
I'll move up to the top.
Second. Gore and Wiegant, and Megan, will you call the roll? Gore?
Aye.
Wiegant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
And finally, our fourth action today is to authorize the Director of Public Works or designate, execute such documents and take such actions as are necessary to implement the Lincoln Sewer District Maintenance District One Wastewater Authority Joint Powers Agreement, fondly known of as Liswa.
Move approval. I'll second.
Gore and Jones, and Megan, will you call the roll? Gore?
Aye.
Wiegant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kevin, and appreciate our City Council partners, the Lincoln City Council. We'll move on then to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is Community Development Resource Agency Costs of Nuisance Abatement 1615 River Road Bridge. Crystal, good morning.
Can you hear me? Yeah, there we go. Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Tahoe SEDRA office here today to provide you with a report on the costs of nuisance abatement. This abatement was related to a collapsing bridge spanning the Turkey River at 1615 River Road, excuse me, which created an imminent danger to the public, namely the rafters that float down this portion of the river. So, the purpose or action requested today is for your board to conduct a public hearing to consider the report and all objections or protests, if any, on this case, and then also to adopt a resolution. We would be asking you, your board, to do that, confirming the report and itemized costs totaling $82,160.07 associated with the bridge abatement located at 1615 River Road, and then directing SEDRA staff to send a demand to the property owner to pay that amount within five days of the date of demand. And so, the itemized costs are located in your board packet, Attachment A, Exhibit One. You'll see that with a resolution. So, just, just to show you a vicinity map here, this is an aerial where this bridge is located. It is right over here, 1615 River Road. It's about two miles north of Tahoe City along Highway 89. And it does span, it did, excuse me, it did span the Turkey River. It's right next to the bike path. So, this is a portion of the river, I think most of you know, that is heavily used by rafters in the summertime. And so, again, we've got Tahoe City here and so it's right, right down the river here. Here's a close up of the, of what was the bridge that has now been removed. The parcels that the bridge served totaled about 10 acres. One is developed with a structure, a really old structure that's sort of boarded up and dilapidated. But that is where you see, see the bridge here. And then, of course, the bike path runs right along here. So, here's a picture of what the bridge looked like before it was torn down. And again, it's, it, there's the address there. The bridge is owned by Tahoe Prop LLC. And again, it served parcels on the other side, but there are no, no structures on the other side that are vacated at the moment. Just by way of background, I wanted to point out that on August 21st, our notice, our office was made aware of an incident where a portion of this bridge did fall onto a rafter in the river. Thankfully, that rafter was not, was not a serious injury. But we were made aware of that. North Tahoe Fire and Placer Sheriff did respond and they did deem the bridge to be unsafe and an imminent danger to the public. At that time, they closed that portion of the river to rafters. They put up signage and tried to direct rafters out of the river so they weren't going under the bridge. And, and then they notified our office. And so, we were directing rafters onto the bike path and then around the bridge and back into the river. So, following that incident, we did conduct multiple inspections. We had our engineering staff, our building staff, co-compliance out, just really to look at the, the structure itself. They did determine that the bridge span needed to be removed. They red-tagged the bridge at that time. They also found that the repair was not an option due to the extent of damage to the bridge. And so, they did determine that the bridge span needed to be removed altogether. On August 29th, we did conduct a dangerous building abatement hearing pursuant to County Code Chapter 1556-180AD. At that hearing, we presented information regarding the collapsed bridge and concern about safety to the rivergoers and the rafters, particularly with the upcoming holidays. So, this is literally right before Labor Day, and so we were very concerned about the number of people that we get floating the river on those holiday weekends. I will note, a representative of the property ownership did attend that hearing. They, at the hearing, acknowledged the poor condition of the bridge, the hazard it posed, and noted they believe the county had the ability to demolish that span of the bridge and mitigate the hazard sooner than could be done themselves. The hearing panel did issue a final order of abatement, finding that the bridge was in violation of Placer County Code and the public safety was substantially endangered. So, they did order the county to take the bridge down. And so, on August 30th and August 31st, we did contract with an outside vendor and had the bridge span removed. The abutments remained. So, I just have a, a bunch of pictures here. I'll kind of walk you through, just sort of shows the danger and, and the condition that the bridge was in. So, here you can see the failing abutments, exposed nails, missing boards. Our staff determined it was kind of ready to collapse at any time that ledger was rotting. There's a lot of dry rot and it was slipping, as you can see here. Here's some additional pictures that show again nails, falling boards. There were boards in the river that had nails on them, definitely presenting a danger to the public. And again, our staff determined that repair was really not a viable option. Additional pictures here just shows missing boards along the bridge and some signage. And then here, you can see rafters. This was after we had red-tagged the bridge and tried to get rafters out. They were still going under the bridge. So, we had definitely some concern about, about safety. And then here is just a picture of the closure, the signage, just to kind of give you an idea. There's all kinds of postings out there right now, the notices that we provided to the rafters and to the property owners about this abatement. So, on to the itemized costs. The total cost incurred by the county is $82,160 roughly. That's again located in your board packet. That costing includes expense of the contract with outside vendor. It was MCM that our Department of Public Works contracted with to take the bridge span down. They did it in record time. And then it also includes soft costs associated with county staff time. So, you'll see that itemized in your board packet. I will say pursuant to Code Section 1556-230A, the chief building official did prepare a report on the costs of this abatement and filed that report with the Clerk of the Board, which is why we are here today. And then the board, that report, the entire report was posted on the subject property and a notice of today's hearing was completed in conformance with the county code. And moving on, that brings me to today's requested action. So, with that, we are requesting that your board conduct a public hearing to consider a report and all objections or protests, if any, on Placer County Code Case, the Code Case Compliance you see here listed regarding the administrative costs of the nuisance abatement, and then adopt a resolution confirming the report and itemized costs totaling $82,160.07 associated with the bridge abatement located at 1650 River Road, and then also direct our staff to send a demand to the property owners to pay that amount within five days of the date of demand. I also would like to note that the property owner is here today and wishes to speak before the board. So, they're, they're prepared to speak before your board today. And then also note that the property is for sale. And we did reach out to the realtor to provide a notice on the report of the costs and just to make them aware of this hearing and the abatement, the costs associated with abatement. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We also, I will point out, have Eric Brumsville with County Counsel and Clayton Cook on the phone as well, who were involved in the abatement process.
Great. Thank you very much, Crystal. Board members, do you have any questions for Crystal? Okay, I'm not seeing any. With that, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go ahead and allow the property owner to speak to us under the public hearing? Yes. And you'll have equal time to staff presentation.
Perfect. Do I know what that is?
Megan will be.
I'll try to be.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. Good morning. My name's Leon Shore. I want to first introduce myself to you. I'm here in a private capacity, but in a public capacity, my job is actually similar to yours. I'm a public servant. I'm a DA, 21 years, County of San Diego prosecutor. I work in the Public Integrity Division and I've prosecuted cases of misappropriation of funds. So, so I'm one that's very aware of public funds and the misuse of public funds. Again, this is not my capacity, but just so that you understand where I'm coming from, I also was Prosecutor of the Year last year, San Diego County, because of the fact that I recovered $230 million in one case for the state of California. So, understanding where I come from. What I do want to do is address and not, not deny most of the stuff that's actually here, but explain it to you and, and have you focus on some certain parts. And I, I'm against the resolution as currently comprised and I'd ask you to modify. I'm not going to go through everything, but I want to tell you, I want to point out 1556 and it's on page 25 of your report, it talks about that you are entitled to recover. Entitled doesn't mean required, and I want to point out the fact that the purpose and scope of 15.56 deals with the Placer County's Board of Supervisors Rental Stock Housing Agency and trying to help with substandard housing and dangerous buildings that create blight and want to let you know that, of course, there are, there is no rental there, there's no properties there. And while you might have the ability to do so, you're entitled to modify. And secondary, I'm going to ask you to look at paragraph two of page 25, which tells you that you can modify or reject the recommendation if it's just to do so. And I think you're going to find that it is just to do so. Also, you'll look at the fiscal impact, what it has to the county, which is really negligible, and that goes to what would happen to the recovered funds. Just to put a little perspective on who we are, we're not a big LLC. We are an LLC, but there were four individuals that have all been going to Tahoe forever. I grew up in Modesto, my family's in Sacramento area. We love Tahoe and we want to preserve the area. We purchased the property in 2019. And when we do, did so, the bridge was essentially in the same exact condition that it's in. We were aware that the property was covered with dilapidated buildings, trash, it was overgrown, and our goal, which we did, was to hire consultants immediately to try to get a replacement bridge and to clean up the property so that eventually, when we took possession of the property, we could put single-family residences for us to be able to utilize as a cabin as we, you know, enjoy the property in the Tahoe area. We immediately, and you can track this, there's, you know, when you look at the parcel numbers, parcels, you can look online, parcels at Lake Tahoe and you go to the parcel number, you find that what we did started in August of 2019, and that's, we contacted TRPA to see what do we need to do to be able to replace this bridge. We hired consultants. This is not my area of expertise. So, we had Loomis Consultant to work with us the entire time to see how do we replace this bridge that, that obviously it needs to be replaced. And so, we had initial meetings where they said, okay, here are the environmental impacts. Here's what you need to do. Here are the agencies you need to consult with. Fire, to make sure that in a bridge replacement, that you're going to need to expand so that, you know, you can deal with fire apparatuses to be able to utilize it. We did that. You'll see 816, 2019 was the first meeting. We had meetings 5420 again with TRPA, 82420 again. They told us that we're going to need to get additional coverage because we're, would have to move the bridge and go into an SEZ zone, Environmental Protected Zone. And so, we had to buy coverage from an outside agency. We said, that's fine, let's work on doing it. And to date, we haven't been able to buy coverage from an outside agency. In early 2021, we were advised by our, by Loomis, our consultants, go ahead and submit to TRPA for the bridge replacement. The reason that you would do that then is they're not going to improve until you actually get the SEZ coverage, but hopefully the SEZ coverage is coming soon. And so, we went ahead and submitted in April of 2021 to be able to replace that bridge. And SEZ coverage still hasn't come. In four, that was 4121, we met, 41721, we met. We dealt with Lahotten, Fish and Game, TRPA, ACOE, which I'm not even sure who that is, Cal Fire, and the conservancies for the SEZ land. In June 17 of 2021, the bridge was determined, I believe by Lahotten, to be unsafe. And we said, yes, we agree it's unsafe. We'd like to replace it. They said, we don't think anyone should be accessing it. We said, we agree. We can't do anything on the property, but we can't access it. And so, we said, no vehicle traffic, no foot traffic, except for our consultants to make sure that there's no issues on the property, that nothing's going on, no additional works being done. So, we cut off all access to the actual property. We were able to have our, our application modified to emergency status. Remember, that's in 2021. Simultaneously, we were minority partners, the, the four of us. We have, had a majority partner who was local and was supposed to be doing the work there. We found out that in his frustration, he had done some work on the property, doing some grading, that was not approved by one of the agencies. He also unfortunately stole a bunch of the LLC money. So, in summer of 2021, we had him removed. We currently have an active case, which he's in default. That's SCV 0048422, where we've sued him for those actions. We let TRPA and all the agencies know of what took place and we were told that it should not slow down our bridge application process because any restoration that needed to be done would be done pursuant to the replacement bridge. So, we were upfront and worked with all the agencies. 92821, apparently, TRPA outsourced the bridge application and it was in emergency status. Again, we still do not have that done. Now, in August of 2022, 16 months after the application process had started and in three years after we began working with TRPA, we were, apparently, an incident took place. We weren't advised immediately of the incident, partially, and I've, I've made everybody aware, the, for some reason, you have it incorrect on who you have as the, the owners of the property. But on August 21st, apparently, there was an incident. On August 25th, we were able to receive the notice of the abatement process because we'd been dealing with all the different agencies. I was informed, that was a Thursday, the abatement said you need to remove this bridge by Sunday. A bridge that we've been trying for three years to remove, that you need to get permits to do so, but that we'd be able to get help, emergency status to get that by Sunday. We immediately called our consultants. They went out that day to check on the bridge status and they said to us, there is no way you're going to be able to get everything through in that period of time and get the bridge removed. They said, it actually looks very similar to how it's been for the last three years, yet your best cause of action is to allow it to be removed. I immediately contacted, prior to contacting the consultants, County Counsel, the building codes, everyone. We let Lahotten know. We said, hey, what can we do? And when we were told what the process would be in order to do the removal and that there would be a hearing on Monday, we said, we, we're not going to protest this. We've been saying for three years, this bridge needs to be removed and we're on board. What is the fastest, cheapest way to remove this so that we deal with public safety issues? We want to do what's just, we want to do what's right. We agreed and said, you don't even need to hold the hearing, but what we can't do is we can't admit any liability because we don't know what the extent of that injury could have been. And honestly, we wouldn't take responsibility for that because we were being held up by TRPA and other agencies to be able to do so. But what we did do is we did reach out to the individuals that were injured, and I will get to that in a moment. I already went through upon notification what we did, and I realize I'm short on time, but I think this is very important that I be allowed to, to finish and it shouldn't take much more. We agreed with, we, we agreed with the removal process. When I reached out, I found out from County When I reached out, I found out from county council who the injured party was. We contacted the family. We said, you know, what happened? They said, we were floating down the river, and underneath the bridge, we hit something. And something ended up triggering the bridge, part of the bridge to collapse. And unfortunately, a child was hit in the head and had to receive stitches. Said, we can't, we can't actually be liable, but we're going to pay for the injury that occurred because that's the right thing to do. That's the just thing to do, and knowing that making a claim against the county or TRPA would take a significant amount of time, and that's not fair to the people involved. So we did what we believed to be just and right.
Mr. Shore, I do need to ask you to wrap up your comments.
I will. I appreciate that. I'll wrap them up very quickly. Now, we're being asked to pay $82,000 for the removal of the deck. I ask that you look at what the expenses were and using the ability that you have to modify or reject on based upon what is just. I'd ask that you modify it and have it be only the amount that it would have cost had we been able to actually remove it ourselves. The removal took place in two days, and it was just the deck. We were getting bids that if we could do the deck, it'd be $10,000 to $15,000. I'm not asking you to pay for that. We will happily pay for what the removal could have been had we been allowed to do so. We also finally have permits to remove the cribbings that were the, holding up the bridge. That came afterwards. There's going to be additional costs that are assumed in that, and we will do so, even though as part of the presentation to the board, it said that those are dangerous and should have been removed at the time. I ask you to look at 15.56 in conclusion 230, which talks about what happens to money during the actual enforcement process. If you are to recover funds, it does not go back into the county coffers. What it goes to is the county treasurer. It deposits it to support housing code enforcement funds. I'm not saying that's a bad cause, but I'm not saying, but I'm saying it's not appropriate to take what we are being asked to pay for, which is about $40,000 in expenses, soft costs, when we agreed to everything. Look at where the breakdown is. If you do modify, we'd ask you to modify to $15,000. If you don't modify, I'd ask for what would be an actual full itemization. I don't think it's accurate what, or that this itemization is full, to say that it went out to a vendor and not list what that vendor is and only say that it costs $48,000 when it occurred in two days' period of time. I've prosecuted folks for not properly submitting claims, and I've prosecuted folks for not recycling. I'll get into more, could get into more detail if I had more time. But what happened to the steel garters that were involved? What was the expense involved? I think the quickest action for you to do is to modify. We'll comply with it. I'd ask that you modify to $10,000 to $15,000. We'll pay that expense. And you can be comfortable in the fact that a dangerous bridge that we've been waiting for three years to remove has been removed. I'd also point out the fact, we do not have a permit yet to replace the bridge. We're still waiting, and it is for sale.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. I appreciate, I thank you for your service. You're obviously a very good prosecutor. So, we will now let our county council respond to some of your concerns. And you can have a seat. We'll call you back up if we have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to put a couple of things on the record. While Mr. Shore would lead you to believe that Article 1556 only deals with affordable housing, it does not. I would put on the record that under 15.56.030 scope, and I will quote, "This article shall also provide an enforcement mechanism for any additional code applicable to housing, dangerous buildings, abandoned structures, zoning, solid waste, nuisances, or violations of the building code." Within your packet on attachment, I believe it is D, you have the notice of to vacate, unsafe to occupy. You have the statement of your chief building official as to why this was an unsafe building, and therefore, it falls squarely within Article 15.56. As staff has also pointed out, under that article, the county is authorized to recoup its costs for abatement. And as the property owner noted on the record, or rather, actually, as staff noted on the record, that the property owner attended the nuisance abatement and acknowledged that the county could take down the bridge faster than the property owner could. Now, the purpose of this public hearing, however, is for the board to consider the costs, which are attached as Exhibit 1 to the resolution, and determine whether those costs are justified or whether you would like to modify them. I would point out that if you modify in terms of the cost to take down the structure that was the cost that the contractor charged, and we aren't able to recoup that, general funds will have to pay for that. In terms of staff costs, I will point out that there was an extraordinary amount of work that was required to move in a very quick period of time, knowing that the Labor Day weekend was coming with a significant amount of rafters that might be going under that bridge. Everyone on staff had to move extremely quickly, and that did up the costs. If you wish to reduce that, that means that any or all the departments will have to write off those costs. In terms of the actual breakdown, I will defer back to staff on that or any questions that you might have of me. Also, as noted by Crystal, Eric Brumfield and Clayton Cook are also on Zoom. They were involved in the actual abatement process. Should you have any questions of them?
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that response. Crystal, I do have a question. Was county staff ever, was a permit ever requested from us? Were we ever asked in your office or in the CEO's office to assist the property owner in this permit process?
Not that I'm aware of, and I don't, and I didn't, there are no records, permit records associated with the removal or reconstruction of a new bridge.
Right. And so the permit would have been for the reconstruction of the bridge, the removal of decking. Would that have required a permit from these agencies and coverage and things?
A demo permit would have been required.
For the full, for the full bridge?
Right. And a permit to reconstruct would have actually been, my understanding is, a permit through our environmental, sorry, not environmental, engineering surveying division, and it would have been for a grading permit. So we don't necessarily have authority over the bridge span, but we would get involved in the grading of, you know, that's associated with the construction of a new bridge.
The illegal grading and tree removal that was done on the other side of the river would have required heavy equipment to go across that bridge in fairly recent times. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And then, in looking at this, as the board knows, I also serve on the TRPA governing board and the CTC governing board, and I am not aware of any outreach to ask for my assistance to help expedite anything on this project. And certainly, most people do know how to reach us when they have challenges with these agencies to go to the elected officials that serve on those boards. Thanks, Crystal. Did any board members have other questions of Crystal on this matter? I'm not seeing any. Then we'll continue with any public comment on this item. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to this item? Anybody on Zoom? I will allow you one more minute, Mr. Shore.
Thank you. I did not reach out to you, and I do not know why our consultants would not have reached out to you. I know they went through TRPA and went normal processes. I wouldn't personally recommend reaching out to you. I want to make sure that you're aware, we do have a picture of the day of the removal and the heavy equipment that went on for the actual removal. The grading that took place was done prior, and the bridge structure still supports. I'm happy to pass that up to you. We're not saying that it wasn't dangerous. We're saying that it should be removed. In writing off the costs that was brought up, these are salaried individuals, just like myself. I don't, we don't have to write off the costs when we prosecute someone for an intentional act. That's what you're salaried to do. These are salaried employees that were doing their job and doing it well, and I appreciate it. I appreciate what they're doing. I'm not asking you to say what they're doing is wrong. I'm asking you to do what's right and just and to modify the order. Thank you. I can leave the picture if you'd like to see it from the day of removal.
Thank you. I witnessed it myself, driving by several times over those two days. So, thank you. Appreciate that. I don't know if any other board members would like to see the picture. Okay. I'm not seeing any other public comment. Again, one more time, Megan, is there anybody on Zoom? Then we'll close the public hearing. Board, entertain any comments.
I'd be happy to make a comment. I appreciate Mr. Shore coming to share his perspective. It certainly wasn't a bridge that needed to take, be taken down. And I certainly understand the frustration of not being able to get done what you need to get done, challenges, especially in the basin area. And Supervisor Augustusson, to your point, like, a lot of my folks don't know that they can reach out to me to help resolve an issue. They just don't think about contacting their elected officials to get something done. And I sometimes have to remind them that I can help them do that. You know, I, it's clear that they understood the importance of replacing this bridge and taking it down. I'm open to looking at just charging the cost of the bridge replacement in the dump truck, which is $49,469.23 because those are the direct hard costs that the county had to pay, based on listening to his challenge of trying to get done what was right done. And he wasn't able to, it's, to this point, taken a couple of years to get it done. So that's a thought that I have, no other perspectives.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any other board member comments? I'm not seeing anyone else weigh in on this. Then I, then, oh, yes, Robert.
Actually, why don't you go ahead, and I'm curious as to your perspective.
You know, my perspective is torn here. Certainly, I would say many constituents don't know how to reach out to elected officials. Certainly, somebody in a situation like Mr. Shore would know that, I would think. But, and certainly, most of the consultants in the community know me from many years in this community. So, I'm challenged with the taxpayers making up the difference for the situation. But I am sympathetic. I have not had a chance, I hadn't heard the arguments, so I haven't had a chance to ask TRPA staff or other agency staff to validate what has, I have no reason to disbelieve it, but I have not heard about this issue, nor has it been brought to my attention. So, I would tend to concur with Bonnie that he should pay the direct costs of the removal. And I know that's more than what they're looking for, but certainly, I would support reducing our cost for the departments. I know that places a burden on the departments, and they do have to justify their budgets. Maybe we're a little bit smaller than San Diego County, and we do have different types of billing systems for our internal staff. So, I could support that as well. But I do, I do feel strongly that the cost of the removal should be borne by the property owner.
Well, thanks. Appreciate that perspective. I, for me, I guess we could argue the numbers forever. The demolition cost what it cost. I actually would commence staff after the injury that we had no choice but to move as quickly as possible, knowing the risk and what could have happened, unfortunately, it didn't happen, be much worse. So then the question is, who should bear those costs? And the question then is reduced to, should it be the taxpayers, Placer County, and/or the people who own the bridge? Sadly, in this county, had there been outreach to this board, I think we could have had an impact on your permit processes over there, a three-ish year period. And the fact that that didn't happen is not the fault of the taxpayers either. So I guess I'm receptive to the arguments. I understand the burden. But I guess that would cause me to err on, how about making a deal where we split the county soft cost of $32,690, do that 50/50? And then I think the hard cost definitely should be covered by the, by the property owner.
Sounds like that's a motion?
All right, so moved.
Oh, okay.
Okay. If that's the motion, hang on. I got to do some math unless somebody is quicker than I am.
Okay, but in the meantime, I do need a second.
Well, and before we do that, Robert, I, you know, I appreciate that perspective. And then I look at, like, you know, we do have county staff, and they've worked really hard on this. At the same time, part of our job as a county is to take care of all these different items, whether it's abatement or all this type of thing. And, you know, people are using that river, enjoying the access to the river, and that ends up bringing, you know, dollars into the local economy. So, I'm not inclined to second your motion. And so I'll, I'll see if somebody else does, but I would prefer to just charge the hard costs.
Why don't we have a second, and then we can discuss the motion?
Okay. Could I first read into the record what that motion needs to be?
Okay.
First of all, the code that we are citing at this point in time is 15.56230E. That is specifically a hearing on protest of the cost in which the board is finding that it wishes to reject staff's proposed total of cost. And instead, based on Supervisor Wigan's proposed motion, it would be to amend the resolution for a total cost of, sorry, I've got a... 50% of the soft costs and 100% of the hard costs. If anybody has...
We need an engineer to give us the number.
Apparently, yes. Lawyers don't know how to use their...
Calculator.
Calculators properly, which is a total of $62,814.65. Again, that is 100% of the hard costs, 50% of the soft costs. And the motion would be amending the last recital of the resolution and number one under the resolution to reflect that cost, $62,814.65. Supervisor, that's the motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Supervisor Jones seconded. And with that, any further board discussion? Okay. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
And any abstentions? Okay. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Shore. Thank you, Crystal. And I want to echo how quickly staff responded to a public emergency situation to remove that bridge. You did an outstanding job and were in contact with us constantly during that process. So, thank you very much. Okay. We're running a bit late. I apologize. But we are now on to our 1020 timed item. And this is County Executive Office, the former Tahoe City Fire Station 51, non-exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Climate and Wildfire Institute, Inc. And Stephanie Holloway is here to present this item.
All right. Well, good morning, Chair Augustusson, members of the board. Stephanie Holloway, your Tahoe Deputy CEO here this morning. I'm honored to really reengage with your board on this item of the old Tahoe City Fire Station within Tahoe City. So, a longstanding effort, longstanding discussion here in Tahoe City, really trying to define the future of the former home of the North Tahoe Fire Protection District in the Station 51 building. So, so just, I know some of you probably know the history of this building, know the history of Commons Beach. For those of you that don't, and for the public, I'm just going to run through a brief background here for you. So, so this site plan gives you a general orientation of where the old fire station is located. It is on the Commons Beach parcel within Tahoe City. It's on actually the southwestern corner, so here in the southwestern corner of the Commons Beach parcel. And so this parcel, Commons Beach, has a very long history within the community, within the region, dating back as far as even 1871, when it was deeded to the people of Tahoe City and held in trust. The fire station on the property was built in 1961 and housed the fire district up until about 2011, so fairly recently in its, in its overall history. I'll also mention, there's a couple of other structures immediately adjacent to the fire station building. The Tahoe Community Center and the Visitor Center buildings were built in 1938 and 1950. The Tahoe Community Center and the Visitor Center buildings were built in nineteen thirty-eight and nineteen fifty, respectively. So like I said, just a little bit of history. There's volumes of history on this property. I'm going to focus today just back on the previous decade. So at the beginning of the decade, the North Tahoe Fire District was working towards a new facility, visioning and looking to relocate their services. They did complete a facility on Fairway Drive and occupied that in twenty-twelve. So with the vacancy of this old fire station, now Station Fifty-One, it really ignited a visioning effort within the community. And in twenty-eleven, there was an effort called the West Commons Beach Alternatives Analysis that was funded with TOT dollars. It was led jointly by the Tahoe City Public Utility District and the Resort Association. So between twenty thirteen and twenty seventeen, there was a number of real property transfers to Placer County. The old fire station building was quit claimed to the county from the North Tahoe Fire Protection District. And the two adjacent buildings, the Community Center and the Visitor Center, were quit claimed from the Public Utility District. So some additional work started to be done at that time by the county to assess the building occupancy needs, if we were to reoccupy that space. So there was an assessment of that. And then in twenty seventeen, we initiated some additional further outreach, formed a steering committee, and really tried to bring this West Commons vision forward, really looking at some potential forward movement on a redevelopment of the property. So I just wanted to stop here and highlight some of these images from the West Commons visioning. Like I said, this was a twenty-eleven effort with the PUD and the Resort Association. These are some of the images that came out of that very robust effort that really, I think, are the culmination of some of the outreach and the visioning that we're currently doing. So a lot of great, a lot of great vision here, a lot of great principles. Many of these are still relevant today. So speaking on some of the principles, so just to orientate your board on some of the conversations, on past engagements, a reuse of this property, of this building, really, it was envisioned to give people a reason to come to Tahoe City as well as a place for the community to gather. It would reactivate and bring vibrancy to the community of Tahoe City. Also, and really provide some economic and scenic benefit from what is currently there today. So the facility would also need to be financially sustainable long-term and align with some of our guiding documents, the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, our land use document, as well as some of the mobility planning that has been done in the Tahoe City area. I'll also mention some additional sort of engagement principles here. The facility would provide an indoor option during inclement weather, at night, to help engage some of the nightlife within the town center, and then also bringing an opportunity for community and others within the shoulder seasons. So the facility would serve locals and visitors and would also provide a range of programming. So the space would be, provide some different types of events and programming opportunities. And then lastly, the redevelopment or reuse of this property would be actively engaged with the beach and the property that it sits on. So with those principles in hand and with your board's direction, we did initiate an effort, a request for information effort through our Facility Services, Facility Management Department, and really trying to look for opportunities to engage an entity that could provide a fiscally sustainable business that meets many of the desired outcomes and principles that were outlined. So that was in twenty seventeen. We did a design charrette late in twenty seventeen. And then in February of twenty eighteen, four concepts were submitted for the repurpose of this site through the RFI process. Those were vetted and brought before your board. And then two concepts were recommended by your board to bring forward for further discussion. So with that, the county did contract with Hyundai Strategic Partners, or HSP, as well as Wyatt Ogilvy Consulting, to perform two additional studies to help inform your board. One was a fiscal feasibility study and the other a land capability assessment. As you know, in the Tahoe Basin, there are constraints around development on properties. And so Ogilvy Consulting helped with that. The HSP report, it was finalized. And HSP advised that both the Siren Arts and Commonwealth, two of the proposals that your board suggested to move forward in the process, really needed some further financial planning. And both proposers were somewhat limited in their experience of doing these types of developments. So with that said, though, your board gave staff direction to continue to engage with both Siren Arts and the Commonwealth proposers, to really come up with some next steps, to talk to community development, to really look into some revisement and realignment of the proposals, to provide you with a more viable option. So I'm going to stop here and just sort of recognize the twenty-nineteen timeframe that this engagement was happening and really, you know, the need for us to pivot in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty with some of the pending pandemic challenges. This conversation did go a little bit stale for a number of reasons. So, but a lot has changed since twenty nineteen. You know, the needs and the desires of this property haven't changed, though, and that is what we really are here to reengage and to have a conversation of how we move that forward. So I'm going to fast-forward us here to the spring of twenty twenty and some current engagement. So with our priorities really shifting back as we emerge from the past two years of uncertainty, really re-establishing a community steering committee, we are back at the table to reengage with many of our stakeholders in the community. So the CEO's office and Facility's management did hold a series of workshops, most recently in August and early September, you know, focusing on many stakeholders that are in Tahoe City. The Tahoe City PUD was involved. The North Lake Tahoe Resort Association was again engaged. Many nonprofits and business leaders were part of this discussion. So our current efforts also involve many conversations with Siren Arts. Siren Arts is still very much interested in being a partner and helping us with the community voice on this property. So I will mention just a couple of things out of this most recent effort. We did engage this small stakeholder group, looking at some inspirational ideas. You know, many similar facilities or inspirational facilities were brought forward by those stakeholders. And so our Facility's management did a deep dive on, you know, what is it about those properties that would be good for Tahoe City? So a lot of really great ideas and visioning came out of that. We did facilitate some small group discussions and looking at, you know, identifying some really big ideas and potentials for this property, but also recognizing many of the challenges and limitations that we are up against. So really, the desired outcome with this group here today, to really reengage and find a common vision, moving us forward, recognizing the value of this property to the community, to the region, and coming up with an idea that really does engage from a number of different levels. So three pillars. We came up with three pillars for this future reuse of the property and these structures. So balancing science and art. Science and art provide us with opportunities to promote education around many of the issues that challenge our community. And then also looking to provide community support, a common theme overall. So let me just stop here on this graphic. We did hire a graphic artist to help us tell this story, to capture the stakeholder visioning and discussion ideas here. Julie Gaziki helped us with that. So some narrative here for you, just to highlight, a lot of capture here. But I'll just kind of point out a couple of narratives here on this slide. So, quote, "This is about quality of life for residents and guests. We need to strike a balance," end quote. Quote, "Harness the economic opportunity. Be stewards of the environment. Foster partnership." This all sounds familiar with some of the guiding principles. So I think we're on the right track. I just wanted to also bring forward an excerpt from Julie on some of the big ideas and the challenges. Again, you know, the space needs to be flexible. It needs to be interactive for the community, for the public that engage there. Education and community are really great anchors for this property. Funding continues to be a challenge for us to solve, and the community support is really critical. So with that, that brings us to the present and a new stakeholder, a new partner, a new voice, the Climate and Wildfire Institute. So the county received a letter of interest from the Climate and Wildfire Institute, I'll call them CWI, from here on out, back in May of this year, really regarding the potential for the use of the current old fire station building. CWI was established in twenty twenty-one as a nonprofit, five oh one C three in California. Their mission is really to reduce forest fire risk and counteract the impacts of climate change through fast, action-based science and policy. So they're really a conglomeration of scientists, really looking at not only the science, but also how do they inform policy, good policy around forest health and climate change. So in practice, CWI brings forward academics, the public, private, community stakeholders, bringing them all together so that they can really respond to wildfire and climate change threats faster and more effectively. So CWI is really interested in providing a physical and virtual space for collaboration, communication, and implementation of this mission. So they've expressed a desire for the institute to be in Tahoe and really looking for a gathering space for scientists, policymakers, and the community. So and CWI is with me here today. I'll let them speak at the end. So another visioning graphic here for you. Caroline Godkin, the Executive Director of CWI, was with us during the stakeholder engagement. And Julie was able to capture her narrative on who is CWI. So I'll give you a little basis behind that, but this graphic, I think, I'll highlight, you know, quote, "Building partnerships is at the core of what we do," says Caroline. All right. So moving on, CWI. So this is a high level, and I'm sure Caroline will give you a deeper dive on this, but high level of what they're working on currently. So they're really tracking climate change and wildfire science, developing success metrics. So what does resiliency really mean and what does it look like? I think that's a really important piece for us to understand. We can talk all day long about resiliency, but what does that look like for our forests and for our climate? They're fostering relationships and federal and tribal partner relationships, really looking to engage our indigenous community in their historical forest management practices. And then also developing some tracking systems, databases, and a common data language, which Caroline can get into, but as I learn more about forest health and science, this is definitely a need. So with that, we're asking your board to approve a long, sorry, a short-term agreement with CWI to further potential redevelopment and partnership, which aligns with both the community principles that we've laid out and CWI's mission. So this agreement includes continued community vetting. So there's a pretty robust community engagement piece in this agreement. So we are going to continue the conversation with many of the stakeholders. They're looking to, you know, really assess their needs, either in the old fire station or how they could partner with us on a bigger vision. That'll include a financing plan and a final proposal before your board. So this is just really an initial conversation with CWI to bring back to your board. So again, CWI, just another partner in the many partners and many very active and passionate stakeholders that we have for this property and the potential that this property brings for the community. So with that, I'm going to close with just the official action and the official request for your board that you approve a non-exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Climate and Wildfire Institute, Inc. regarding the potential future use of the former Tahoe City Fire Station Fifty-One building on county property, APN zero-nine-four-zero-seven-zero-zero-one-three-zero-zero-zero, and authorizing the county executive officer or designate to execute an agreement in substantial conformance with the attached agreement, contingent upon county council and risk management approval. And two, authorize the county executive officer or designate to take all necessary actions to implement that agreement. So I'm going to stick around for questions, but I'm going to hand this over to Caroline Godkin, Executive Director of the CWI.
Thank you, Stephanie. Welcome, Caroline.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Chair Augustusson, members, supervisors, it's a real privilege to be here today, it's always difficult when you're short, and to talk about CWI. I just wanted to start off by first thanking you, Supervisor Augustusson, for your support and also for all of the staff and the stakeholders who've come together. I've certainly learned a huge amount, and I've received a lot of inspiration on how we can potentially work together and move this forward. So I'm really grateful for that. So again, my name is Caroline Godkin. I was appointed as the Executive Director of the Climate and Wildfire Institute in June of this year. Prior to that, I had fourteen years of state service, working both on wildfire, emergency response, and other climate and natural disaster-related issues. I was incredibly honored to be selected by the board to be their first executive officer, executive director. And I'm really looking forward to digging in and building this organization. Stephanie did such an amazing job of talking about who we are and what we're doing. It's a little difficult to follow. But broadly, we are a boundary organization dedicated to catalyzing research around climate and wildfire and critically getting that information into the hands of policymakers and practitioners. And to make sure that we are using the best available science as quickly as possible to confront this crisis that we all know is so critical to all of our experience, both here in California and around the world. We have been very fortunate to receive seven million dollars of state funding. We received that in the twenty-twenty-one budget, and we're already putting that to work. We are supporting the Governor's Forest Management Task Force in some of the activities that Stephanie talked about. We are building open data structures. This is critically important to us, that this information is open and available to any practitioner who needs it. And we're also working on tools to more effectively communicate the crisis that we are in. As supervisors, I'm sure, you know, you have all experienced trying to communicate the challenges and the balances and the difficult trade-offs we must make. So really working with academics to help us create robust scientific ways of communicating what we need to do and how we need to do it. Looking to, why are we thinking about having a home in the Tahoe Basin? Obviously, this is a world-class space and a place from which we all derive inspiration, but also where we can see the on-the-ground impacts of climate change and activities that we are doing to address them. For me, the exciting opportunity would be a space to convene, to educate, and to create linkages between academia, policymakers, practitioners, but critically also the communities that are living in the basin, and to bring together those linkages. And honestly, it's a destination for folks who would be excited to be here, to aspire to experience this. We've already, since June, held three convenings. We've had close to a hundred and fifty academics, practitioners, policymakers join us to help shape our agenda. And that's the type of activity that I would love to have a permanent home, that people mentally can identify with CWI, with Placer County, and with our community here. I'm, again, incredibly grateful that we have the opportunity to discuss this agreement. It's really a way to frame our activities in the next year, to talk about how we can engage, how we can work with community partners, and then actually to come up with a vision potentially for the old fire station. So with that, again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. And I, too, obviously, will stick around if you have any questions for us.
Thank you, Caroline. Appreciate it. Okay, Stephanie, let's see. Are there any board questions for either Stephanie or Caroline?
Okay, I have one. I try to hold off. The, some of the discussions we've been having, and I was unable to attend the second visioning workshop that you did, but excellent job, Jane and you, for facilitating that. As we sit here today in a private meeting room, the county does struggle with finding meeting space up here and convening our own activities in the Tahoe area. We rely on private meeting rooms that are sometimes not available, sometimes challenging for our tech staff to operate in. And I would really like our list, our needs, make sure that this is taken into consideration at this site, some sort of meeting space that can be multifunctional. The current event center was booked solid today. That's great news, but we weren't able to meet there. So those are the types of issues that I see when we try to convene public meetings. We have very limited public spaces and abilities. So I want to just make sure that continues to stay in the discussion. This may not be the right site for that, or it may work well. So I just want to make sure it's considered as we move forward, that the county's own needs are also considered.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that was a topic of the discussion with the stakeholders and continues to be a need identified. And so, you know, the kind of the long-range vision from the stakeholder group was to have a facility that had flexibility, that met those needs, as well as provided this basis, right, for telling the story, science, art, and education. And so I think, you know, having a space that is flexible, that is dynamic, that meets those needs is really on the forefront of where we're headed.
Great. Thank you. Not seeing other board comments, so I'll entertain public comment on this item. Are there any members of the public? I see a number here, and there's a few on Zoom. Would anyone like to start off? Good morning.
Okay, hi. I'm Renee Codeane. A little about me. I worked in a previous life. First project was with Christie Field Restoration Project years and years ago. That was back in the 90s. I've worked directly with Art Chapman here on the Homewood redevelopment project, garnering all the community support he needed to pass that project through. I've also worked, on the flip side of things, in the startup space. I've launched several startups and have worked with entrepreneurs. So I am, I love fast-track and moving things through and pushing things through. I don't love bureaucracy, but in this case scenario, I'm also a business owner in downtown Tahoe City. In this case scenario, we're missing, we're missing a key step. We don't, we haven't gone through the public outreach process. There was this stakeholder meeting, and that was with seven or eight individuals only. There's made mention of nonprofits, but it was only, I think there's only one person who represented a nonprofit in that room. So I'd love to see, in order to engender more trust and to help facilitate a process where we are not succumbing to any personal biases, that we do open it up to a public discussion. We could, in fact, have Cindy Gustafson and Art Chapman perhaps meet at the Homewood Lodge and showcase the tinderbox that exists behind him on that large parcel of private land and engage the public properly. So it's one more meeting before we look at any contracts. That would give CWI a little more time, too, to obtain the proper endorsements they need. They haven't been in existence very long. There's no contact information on their website. They need to, perhaps, and would give us, I think, more trust as a community to know that local, state, and federal firefighting agencies are endorsing them. So that would give them a little time to do that, perhaps also come up with some type of financial plan collectively outside of the $7 million they procured from Gavin Newsom, about how this could become a viable project. So I just think we need to do a little more due diligence before we do any contracts. It just seems a little bit out of step with what would normally happen with a public-use space. If we don't do that, I think we're now saying that Placer County and the government no longer requires a public process, and we make closed-doors decisions or we only speak to seven or eight individuals in the community. And that doesn't feel like enough to me. So that is my ask of all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Renee. Are there other members of the public who would like to address this item? Good morning, Rob.
So I've prepared a little something here so I don't ramble. Hello, my name is Robles, and I'm a local. I've been a local in Tahoe for 16 years. My office is in Tahoe City. I'm a licensed and active architect, real estate broker, and contractor that focuses on artful and thoughtful projects. As well, I'm the president of the Tahoe City Downtown Association, but not officially representing them in my full comment today. As well, I've been a member of the public, and my company has been the developer arm of the Siren Arts Group, extending a considerable amount of free services to see a truly, a true cultural and public convening space happen at the Firehouse property. The hope is to have a space for locals and guests to do various things, regardless of rain or shine, day or night, large or small, which is truly lacking in our community. I remain optimistic to see what CWI can add to the climate wildfire issues, which are very real and much, and as much as I can see them being a part of what this property can be, I frankly don't see them being the thing at the Firehouse property. In addition, I have strong concerns regarding the county's process and that kind of gap in Stephanie Holloway's presentation since 2020, as well how the agreement is drafted. In June of 2018, the Siren Arts proposed leasing the building while we were deciding the fate of the building, and it said that approving the uses that need to be a community-serving. Our project has always been about the community, and we have many community members and businesses that have vocally and signed support, letters of support for our project. In June of 2018, Placer County Senior Project Manager Susie Voe said in an email, "The county is agreeable to holding off on releasing an RFP until we have had a chance to vet your concepts with a feasibility consultant. We will be working with you on any studies, shared results. So we'll communicate with you if we choose an RFP or go in a different direction." In 2019, Hudden prepared and later presented feasibility analysis with the county outline and a schedule to keep exploring the two options. The constraint analysis had been the getting factor to have us proceed with Placer County, various departments to go over our project. But in addition, receiving constraint analysis during COVID, our team had been working to address a number of Hudden's comments, including talks with various nonprofits and some county staff members. Ultimately, the feasibility consultant was to evaluate the updated proposals, but we have never been allowed that point, to get to that point by Placer County. In November of 2020, we asked, "Would it be great to get the constraints analysis?" They said, "We'll share the report once it's been received." In February of 2022, I asked Nick Martin with Placer County, who's the latest contact? What's going on? Could we rent it? Could TCDA rent it, looking for a new home? Nick replied, "He would talk with Stephanie Holloway." No response from that. Finally, in July 2020, Eric Finley proposed a 30-minute meeting, which we were notified that CWI was in talks with the county, and we had done some talks with them, just cutting to it. The property is for the people of Tahoe City. Actually, TCDA's mission is to serve as a local voice in the promotion and enhancement of Tahoe City community and its businesses, our vision to create a vibrant and prosperous place to live, work, play, and visit. I would like to formally request that this agreement incorporates the Tahoe City Downtown Association and our group as one of the parties to the agreement. As well, if you wish to proceed with this agreement as drafted, I mean, Housekeeping United, and it says it's a non-exclusive right-to-negotiate agreement, yet it states during the term, "The county agrees that it will not negotiate directly or indirectly with any other persons or entity regarding sale on ground lease for development of all portions of the site. The wording should be updated." And don't worry to the Board of Supervisors, we've always planned to have a home for you with a lake in the background and not have to pay for parking. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate your comments and request. Kristin.
Hello, my name is Kristin Hannah. I wear many hats before you today. I'm the founder of Lake Tahoe Dance Collective. And if you think it's hard to put on a Board of Supervisors meeting, try a ballet. The hat I'm going to wear today is the 17th cousin of Ulysses S. Grant. Why here? This question has been asked by everyone involved in the public process since 2011 regarding what was to happen in this space. I have been involved since then as a citizen, doing my civic duty to be involved in our community, and I appreciate that opportunity. This property was deeded for the people of Tahoe City and has been home to various iterations of community centers. We have an opportunity to make the most wonderful amenity for the people of Tahoe City and its visitors. The public process we have participated in since 2017 was never formally closed, even though the world shut down. We welcome CWI to enter this public process that ourselves, speaking as part of the Siren Arts Organization and the community, have been rallied around since 2017. This includes feasibility studies, public meetings, all of which agreed on the space's potential to be the anchor that brings vitality and vibrancy back to Tahoe City. It should not be at the sole discretion of any county employee to completely redirect a public process into a private conversation resulting in the contract you see before you today. Why here? CWI's mission states, "The Climate and Wildfire Institute brings existing climate and wildfire science to policy and decision-making and speeds the implementation of science-based approaches on the ground. The institute leverages the academy's research talent, the private sector's nimbleness, and the public sector's decision-making leadership for faster and smarter solutions." Personally, I wholeheartedly believe in the work that needs to be done to save our world. It does not speak to the needs of the people of Tahoe City and to its neighbors to the north and west shores in Placer County. The work they are doing is honorable, but their center should be in the state capital to lobby for political action. Why here? In our meetings with CWI and county staff, the multi-use flexible community space that we have been involved in since hearing the need for this kind of space throughout the public process. We are unclear as to why we weren't given the opportunity in an introduction to speak with CWI when they first approached the county. We have always been about community and collaboration. At our last presentation before you, the Board of Supervisors, the board requested that Siren Arts meet with the other project, The Commonwealth, to discuss potential collaboration between the two projects. Please give the community and us the way in, the option to weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Appreciate your comments. Are there other members of the public in the room that would like to address this item?
Good morning, Chair Gustafson, members of the board. My name is Sean Barkley. I'm the general manager of the Tahoe City Public Utility District. The Tahoe City Public Utility District has had a long history of involvement in the planning process, going back to the West Commons visioning process that Stephanie talked about earlier. I'm here today just representing myself as the general manager of the Tahoe City PUD, not formally representing our board of directors. I have been involved in the process since 2017 that the county has put forward. I am nothing if not a pragmatist, and at this point, you know, that building has been sitting empty for 10 years. And so this doesn't feel rushed to me. There's been a number of different public processes. I think the public's had a lot of opportunities to share their input for what the community needs, and those are well-documented. The folks you've heard from, there are needs across our community for meeting space, for performing arts space, a lot of different needs. This site is such a critical site to our community. It is attached to probably the most popular beach in North Lake Tahoe, Commons Beach, and it is used extensively as a recreation site. This building sits there and currently is not activated for any beneficial use. From my perspective, the opportunity to take advantage of the Climate and Wildfire Institute coming in and bringing more attention on the good work that's happening around Lake Tahoe to protect our communities from catastrophic wildfire is one that we should take advantage of. In many ways, the Tahoe Basin is leading efforts across the state, really, in proactive measures to protect our communities from catastrophic wildfire, from forest management projects to infrastructure, water infrastructure for fire suppression within our communities. And I think this opportunity to bring the science-based group to the basin is a really good opportunity that we should take advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Are there other members of the public who would like to address the board? Good morning, Samir.
Good morning. Samir Tuma, developer of the Tahoe City Lodge, as well as a board member of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. A couple of things. One is, just listening to Sean, I would echo his sentiment. You know, when we first started on the Tahoe City Lodge project, which is about a decade ago, the fireplace, the fire station was in play, and there was a lot of talk about, "Do we make it a park? Do we make it this? Do we make it that?" There have been any number of sort of fits and starts and processes we've been, we've gone through. And in the meantime, it just sort of sits there as a white elephant. I think the opportunity that the Wildfire Institute presents is tremendous. They, it is, I just, I can't think of anything more poignant to where we are at this point as a state and as the region, and the importance of focusing on education and information around wildfire. And so I think they bring an opportunity, a potential, to help educate, to create an environment where that actually becomes an attraction and something for both locals as well as visitors to go to, become informed, and that sort of thing. The fact that they come with potentially some funding, some good-sized funding, is important. I think a lot of the feasibility and discussions we've had about this site and different things to do there, it is, it's difficult. You don't have a huge parking lot. You don't have the ability to have a lot of retail or other things that might be supported there. I have been a part of the working group that's had several meetings. And one of the things that I was really encouraged about during those discussions is the flexibility, is the idea that this site could serve a lot of different purposes. And it could have performing arts in it. It could have, potentially, it could have a visitor center in it. For example, the resort association theoretically could move in there and help provide ongoing revenue in the form of rent and help operate the center. Certainly not anything that we need to do as a resort association, but it's an option, something that's on the table. And I think, you know, we're really presented with an opportunity here to move forward with something that is incredibly important to all of us. And I think, you know, the non-exclusive right to negotiate, I think that is, that's a great way to go about this. Let's get this conversation started. I certainly would support the meetings between Siren Arts and CWI to talk more about how they might collaborate and how that space might have both. The other thing I mentioned just briefly, I know Supervisor Gustafson and others went to the exhibit up in Truckee in recent weeks that they did regarding wildfire. I didn't have the opportunity to go on a tour, but I went and just looked at it. And I got to say, it was pretty impressive, just this, and that's, what was there is sort of a relatively sort of thick stagnant exhibit, but the inspiration that you got from reading that. So bringing that and this type of information convenings to town, please move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Samir. Are there other members of the public here in the room? And then do we have, we have one on Zoom. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Judy Friedman. I wear a whole lot of different hats in this community. When Stephanie Holloway put a slide up there that said 2011, I about tipped over. I think Supervisor Gustafson was in a different role in those days. I might be the second historian in the room next to her, but we've been holding public meetings since that time. There were meetings at the PUD, meetings at Grand Alabaca, and everywhere we could meet, we've talked about this building. This building is the gateway to our community. It's sitting there as an eyesore. A variety of uses can go into it. CWI gives us a lot of options that we wouldn't otherwise have, not the least of which is financial. The benefits to the community are huge. It can be mixed use. We can bring in the arts. We can bring in all kinds of things, but not if we don't stop studying something for 12 years and get moving on it. This is the opportunity to do that. There are other benefits to this site, which, as Samir referred to, a visitor center. But beyond that, as the Tahoe Basin Area Plan is being redone, and we're trying to figure out how to revitalize our town centers, this gives us a huge figure out how to revitalize our town centers, this gives us a huge opportunity with hotels coming in, get those hotel rooms filled, then we move the short-term rental hotels out of the neighborhoods and put them where they belong in the town center. This will bring people in. This brings in conferences. This brings in a level of visitor that we don't currently have. Fill the restaurants, fill the hotels, get this building going, get this agreement going, and let's get some action going. I recently learned the phrase "analysis paralysis." It's killing us. So I urge you to approve this agreement.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. I'm not seeing anyone else in the room. Last call in the room for any public comments? Don't be shy.
Not shy at all. Good morning, distinguished board members. Tony Karawski from the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. Just want to say, I've been involved in some of the conversations and have seen some of the transparency with which the county's operating in with regards to the project and aligning the project core values to kind of our community core values and the true needs. This project represents an incredible economic development opportunity for downtown Tahoe City and the stakeholders involved. We would like to see this project move forward and say that, in that process, I think somebody pointed out earlier about engagement with our general public, and we'd just like to emphasize, I think, that going forward in this process, as we're working through contract negotiations, taking in the whole account of our residents, the needs of our residents, the needs of our businesses, and the needs of our visitors in downtown Tahoe City in that process. And we'd just say thank you for your consideration in that.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, one last chance in the room. Okay, then we'll go to the Zoom caller. Brandon, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Thanks. Did everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Brandon.
Awesome. Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Brandon Hattigan. I'm the past president of the Tahoe City Downtown Association, as well as the past chair of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. But more importantly, I am an obvious source in the building it resides in, both of which are anchors in Tahoe City and have been for nearly 50 years, and are located directly across from the building at the conversation again today. Anyone here in North Lake knows that I take a progressive approach to community improvement. I'd also add that I'm a lovely and free-hugging climate activist in this area. To illustrate my community inclination, I can tell you that a free event that I've put on for nearly 20 years has raised over a billion dollars in local nonprofits and many. I'm in favor of change, which I should have said changed correctly and vetted correctly because Tahoe City and North Shore are direly of social and economic health. However, in regards to the topic at hand, I could not disagree more with not only the proposal, but the entire process. I'm shocked, actually, that our governmental leadership, if we were to be represented, we'd be champions of this effort. And I'll tell you, when this process began in 2017, I was hopeful. The county was actively engaging the community for what we wanted in this location. There was community meeting, dialogue, and vetting process. When COVID derailed everything, it also derailed this outreach, and in my opinion, it has not recovered regardless of what we hear today. The small groups mentioned here were not representative of our community at all. For instance, you think that if this was the case, a property owner directly across the street would have been at least approached for some kind of input. And I can tell you that this presentation, if sugarcoat it, not representative of Tahoe City community input. I'd really like to encourage everyone to read closely between paragraph four and five, and you can see there was a marked departure from what was laid out and part of the community to something entirely different. And that's primarily because county staff, it was entirely changed, and the new people were not involved in the prior procedures. This is the trust issue that so many locals have with Placer County. I'm not a county bachelor, but I would very much not point this out as community. So I encourage the board to ask why an elected leader would move away from a pre-existing community dialogue and partner with a business that is barely a year old, has no track record or accomplishments, and is only pitching a concept backed by perceived funding. Funded being the key word, money. And then worse, unilaterally give them access to one of the most important properties in our town. Thanks for coming to the PUD. Our community needs amenities and compelling reasons for both locals and visitors that we put down. The middle class is on life support, and I would go as far as to tell you, as a near-20-year local, the community at large is on life support. We do not need this board to approve chasing something brightly shiny with no track record that has no value add for North Lake. And the worst part is it will negate other better possibilities. But I can tell you, I speak for so many of you, that this is a terrible concept. There should be aggressively protested against. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Are there any other comments on Zoom?
I see none, Chair.
Okay, then we'll come back to the public. I know that County Council wants to address a modification that was raised that needs to be made in our actions today, and then I have some questions of staff. So Karen, do you want to go first?
Yes. One of the speakers had pointed out what turns out to be an error in the agreement, and I would refer the board to page 45 of your packet, paragraph three. This is a non-exclusive right to negotiate, and unfortunately, the second sentence refers to exclusive rights to negotiate and should not be there. So therefore, what we're, if this action was to go forward, your first motion would be to approve the, approve the non-exclusive right to negotiate agreement. I'm not going to read the rest of it, but after the A can, it would be as amended. And staff will meanwhile strike the second sentence of paragraph number three in the agreement, and that's what would be approved and what would be executed. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Karen. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions before I ask of you?
Sound clear about which paragraph and which sentence?
This is in the agreement itself. It's page 45, and it is paragraph number three, and is the second sentence, which starts with "during the term." The county would not negotiate directly with anybody else. That's in error, and that entire sentence would be stricken from the agreement that would be executed if the board decides to go forward with that.
So the county may allow access to, or limited right of entry to, other persons or entities for a specific short-term use as needed? Is that?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Jones, do you have questions?
Yes, I do. Having been fairly new on the board, I'm hearing a lot of comments that have kind of caused me concern with regard to a decision that I'm being asked to make today. Cindy, could you clarify? You've been involved in a long term. Sure. Folks that are concerned that we're not really making this enough of a public outreach or a rush to, it doesn't look like a rush to judgment, but could you help me out with some of that?
Absolutely, and I think some of the questions I was going to propose to staff to address, because certainly we're well, well, well aware of the previous process and the Siren Arts' desire to look at a more art-focused facility at this location. And so Stephanie, I wanted to ask you, first off, you've met with Siren Arts on several occasions and facilitated discussions, and there was no discussion, as far as I was aware in any of the meetings, that they wouldn't be included in looking at opportunities at this site. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that the point of clarification that, you know, this is a continuation of this discussion. We recognize that there's, this has been a long time, and there's been some gaps in that conversation. But, you know, your board gave us clear direction to continue to engage with Siren Arts. They are definitely a partner. They're still actively, as evident today, wanting to be in this conversation. You know, this non-exclusive right to negotiate with CWI really gives your board and gives us time to vet their interests. They're committed to helping us with an engagement process, so we're continuing. And so to Judy, we're not done talking yet. We are going to continue to build a very robust community engagement process. CWI is committed to help us with that and to be out front with us on that. So that's part of the agreement. Again, a continuation of the conversation, including Siren Arts.
And the groups that were invited to participate did have representation from the local utility district, from the resort association, as well as from the Downtown Association and Siren Arts.
Yes, correct.
So many of the very active leadership individuals. Did anyone ask for other groups to be engaged in that process? Did you deny access to anyone else?
Yeah, no, we didn't deny access, and I think, as Samir put it, you know, this was really a working group, trying to re-engage, reconvene. There's a much bigger engagement process, though, that we recognize that's needed still.
And in order to move to that next step, Supervisor Jones, we need to commit some dollars to analysis, architectural analysis and other continuing investigations with, and CWI needs to do that as well, to understand what their process will be. They needed some indication that we were willing to work with them. We, just like we've partnered with Sac State and Sierra College on the western end of the county, working with our academic institutions that are encapsulated within CWI is a focus that this county has been moving toward with supporting efforts in education and science, not to the exclusion of other activities, though. But the reason for that is these entities do bring a lot of resources and impact into our local economy. The recent Envision Tahoe process was another process, I mean, we have so many processes up here, that I co-chaired, and in that long process throughout the Tahoe Basin, again, it was science and health that were the highest priorities in looking at expanding our economic vitality of the basin and attracting higher-paying jobs outside of the tourism industry, which science and health bring to a community. And so many factors went into that study as well. So I understand, and I'm hugely disappointed at the vehemence that people feel that we're backing them out, and I don't feel that's the case at all. We've talked quite extensively about the arts. We've invested millions in trying to find a performing arts facility through the TOT funds for almost as long as this has been going on and have not resulted in an entity or a program that could come forward and be funded. So I've expressed to the group personally, arts probably can't carry this on its own. There are other community centers for some of the needs, and I know the PUD is working on their active recreation components and looking at recreational needs. Here's an opportunity to look at the science and health needs in conjunction with other opportunities. And you heard me say, we need spaces. We need indoor spaces in this region. We've known that for decades, so. Anyway, I hope that helps. I can't speak to the, how disappointed I am in the comments, because I think I've spent at least my career working for the betterment of this community and trying to find win-wins, and that takes balance and compromise. None of us get it one way or the other. We have to work together, so I hope we can continue to do that to all of you. Any other questions for Stephanie?
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Yeah, thank you. You know, I've been involved in this since, well, before 2011. You know, I toured the, when I was a fire station, I toured there with the former chief, who's now deceased. And it is a eyesore. It's been a eyesore. And every time I come up here driving into Tahoe City, I say, well, nothing's happened. When's something going to happen? And so, and I've been in discussions, and I've been to workshops, there was potential, I think there was a brewery-type restaurant thing going in or thought to go in. But what I see with CWI is a catalyst to bring more discussion to this item and actually having something with some substance that can actually move forward. Doesn't mean that it, maybe it won't be feasible, maybe it's too expensive, but I think it's worthwhile to bring it forward just to have that discussion and have a little bit more robust discussion about the potential for that facility. Thank you.
May I ask a quick question? And that is, Stephanie, in the staff report, I recall back that we had asked you all to go back to the, with the two proposers, to do a fiscal analysis, correct?
Correct.
So that did happen, if I recall, and then, right, none, neither of them were fully viable, right, with the funding structures that were available?
Yeah, that was the Hunden Strategic Partners work that the county initiated, to really look at feasibility of both of that, both of those proposals. So their report clearly defines that, you know, some additional, you know, planning and programming around delivery of that project was needed, and so some questions about viability.
So that's where we ended, and then COVID happened, and now we've got somebody else who's come to say, we've got an opportunity, let's take a look at that as well. So it doesn't mean we can't continue to talk with other partners, and it doesn't mean that we can't have these two partners along with the county talk, along with community outreach for this potential. Or I just need to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just build on that. I mean, we definitely, I mean, we definitely, the working group, the county, we definitely see this as a need for partnership. You know, there's been a lot of conversation with a lot of interested people. You heard the resort association even today say, hey, we're willing to, you know, to be a viable player in this, in this potential, how this eventually comes together. So we have a lot of partners. We value that partnership. You know, this project to be what we think and what we hope it to be is going to take that. It's going to take funding partners, it's going to take community partners, it's really, it's going to take the county's lead on it. So, you know, it's a dynamic project, and we value all of those partners.
Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Wegant?
Building on the words partnering and outreach, I think we should continue to do that. We have done that. I've been around for a while, too, as Jim noted with the totality of the time that we've been involved in this. And I just would cite, most recently, there've been a couple of studies that have been sent to me referring to the fact that all of California's work towards climate change mission reductions has probably been overwhelmed by catastrophic forest fires in the last three years, I think. I don't remember the details. And then another study that talks about the horrible health issues related to PF2.5 solid particulates and much of, are huge in forest fires, particularly young people that have become a common exposure to us now for the last several years, and can only be expected to continue. So I think that, what a great partnership this might be, depending on the details, and I think what we're being asked to consider is whether or not we want to continue that conversation, including a lot more outreach that has already been articulated. I don't want to predispose the position or the outcomes that might result from this effort, but I've always hoped that the county could actually be a leader in the Western United States as relates to forest management for healthy forests that has been lacking for so long, which would result in tremendous improvements to our forest health and water sheds, et cetera, et cetera, along with huge reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. So with that, I'm happy to actually move that we approve the non-exclusive agreement that has been discussed as modified, and that we authorize the county exec or designate to take all necessary actions to implement that.
I'll second.
Thank you, Supervisors Wegant and Holmes, and this is a, just a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
And one abstention. Supervisor Jones abst-
And one abstention. Supervisor Jones abstaining. Okay. Thank you very much, and thanks for all the public comment on this item. Thank you. Okay. We are now going to move to our 11:30 timed item. This is item number four, County Executive North Tahoe Eastern Placer Priority Project. It's found on page 59 of the board packet.
All right. I have handouts for you on this one.
Yeah, you can, or I can. Thank you so much, Stephanie. Perfect. Yeah, just leave them here.
All right. Good morning, still, I believe, almost. So Stephanie Holloway, again, Deputy CEO with the County Executive Office here in Tahoe. So this is a continuation of a conversation that we had with your board. Back in June, we presented an item really highlighting some of our partnerships, not to overuse a term here today, but some of our partnerships from an external perspective. Really a framework here in Tahoe from federal, state, local, special districts, community partners, all of which we've already kind of highlighted here today. So I won't go into that, but today I'll just say, we want to focus, excuse me, more internally, excuse me, on our county team. So there's a lot of projects that our county team is lead on. And so I'm joined here today with a number of department leads, from Public Works, to our housing team, to Facilities Management, and our parks and open space, and a couple of our special district partners as well, to help me tell this story. There's a lot of really great graphics for you this morning. So I'll just jump in, and hopefully my voice holds. Okay, so building on an overview that I will do on some of our priority projects, we will also get a presentation on a housing item, thank you, Jane, a housing item, to update your board, a transportation item, housing and transportation, as you all know, are two really key focus areas for us currently here in Eastern Placer. And then we'll highlight some progress and momentum around our parks and trails master plan. So let me just jump in, and this is part of what I handed out to you today. So really, I think, just to highlight, you know, building off of the presentation that we did in June, which highlighted all of these partners that you see kind of on the exterior of this graphic, focusing in on how they plug in with our county teams. So the nucleus that is in this graphic, you'll see here, a number of different departments that are either housed or have great focus here in the region, community development, our executive office, facilities management, health and human services, our library services, parks and open space, Public Works, and then also always present County Council to advise us. So I'll just say here, really, our internal teams are not only delivering services, like library services, health and human services, but many of our teams are really instrumental in implementation of many of the projects that are in our planning documents, in your board's direction. And so we're here to really highlight a number of those projects, and really give you a comprehensive look at everything that our internal teams are working on, and then also engaging with in the community currently. So this is a full list. Well, I wouldn't, I'm not going to say this is a full list. There's obviously a lot more. But just to really bring forward some of the major priority projects that our teams are currently working on, we've broken this down into different specific department leads. We sat down with the departments this summer to build this list, to really understand who's the lead on these projects, and then where do they need support. There's a lot of cross-departmental support and cross-departmental collaboration within our organization. So this really gives us a framework for you all, for the public, to understand, you know, who's leading these projects, and who do I go to to talk to if I have questions. So a lot of good projects on here. I'll highlight a few. We did meet with your board in the Olympic Valley Park yesterday. We talked about the Truckee River Access Trail. That is a connection of the existing trail along the Truckee River, terminates in Olympic Valley. This project would continue it further to the north and eventually connect it up with the Town of Truckee Trail System. So really, a great project for us. Our Public Works team is working on that. And then also the Snow Museum, a project that we've been actively engaged with your board on, with the Snow Museum Foundation over the years, county taking a lead on processing the environmental document at this point. So those two projects were highlighted with your board yesterday. I'll just mention, in your packet, and I don't have it on the slides here today, but in your packet is also a map of all the community development projects. So the private projects that are happening within our region, this is an insert in your, in your handout today. Not a lot of yellow on this map here, but community development is actively engaged on a number of different private projects that you don't see on the screen here. So but as far as housing and the area plan, community development actively engaged in that, I think it was mentioned earlier, you know, the Tahoe Basin Area Plan is currently in a state of update. So those are some revisions and modifications that community development is engaged with our community on currently, and will be before your board hopefully soon. Our fire station building, obviously just got done with that discussion. And then a number of different trail projects. I will mention the North Tahoe Trail just briefly, something that we have through our CAP committee, through your CAP committee. Public Works has advanced that project, really hoping to continue the extension of that trail to the regional park into the future. So a lot of great projects here. I won't highlight all of them, because I do want to hand this off to some of our department leads. So a graphic here, I think just to mention, a lot of, a lot of these projects, this isn't an extensive list, but you can see that really, we're working throughout the resort triangle on implementation, from the town centers, to the resort communities, to our feeder roads with trails, and, and active management of our corridors in and out of the basin. So this is really just meant to be a, where are we at on these projects? This is a status tracker. We are hoping to keep this updated for you. I will mention that our CEO and PIO team is currently working on an update, updated website for the Tahoe region, which would be a one-stop shop for information. It will feed in a lot of the different departments and their projects. And so this status tracker will reside there as well. So you can see there's a lot of projects in the planning stage currently, a lot of real active behind-the-scenes work that's going on. And, and some of these projects, we do anticipate in the next, you know, three to six months to really be out before the public, moving into that permitting stage. So committed on, you know, real heightened community engagement on those projects, and so we anticipate a lot of work in that area. So I'll just, you know, kind of mention, like I said, there's a lot of projects here within the departments that they're working on, that they're, you know, actively engaged with TRPA and other stakeholders, and then hopefully moving, moving those forward fairly quickly. So. All right. So I am going to hand this over. We're going to give you a presentation on the housing needs. You've seen some of this information before, but just to refresh on one of the critical pieces of conversation in our community, and that is housing and the need to promote housing. So I'm going to hand this over to Shawna Purvines. So while she comes up, I just wanted to recognize and welcome Shawna to the CEO team as our deputy land use CEO. Shawna and I will be working hand-in-hand on many of these projects, you know, helping the departments facilitate them moving forward on both sides of the summit. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Shawna.
Thank you, Stephanie. Shawna Purvines, Deputy CEO, located in the Auburn office. And as Stephanie said, we'll be working hand-in-hand on a number of these projects in the Tahoe area. So I'm going to provide you just a little bit of information that I have shared often with you before, but I think it is a good refresher as we go in and talk more about some of the housing projects that the county team is working on. So this past budget season, we had the opportunity with SEDRA to, in the Tahoe office, to do some strategizing around the priorities. One of those priorities, of course, being addressing the housing crisis in the Tahoe area. This is information from probably one of the most recent housing needs assessment, albeit, housing needs assessment have been done nearly annually for the past at least six or seven years. Really, probably one of the most notable ones that kind of kicked off some of the more, more recent discussions was one done by the Tahoe Truckee Workforce Housing Agency, which resulted in the development of the Mountain Housing Council. So they have, pretty much like I said, annually, maybe about every 18 months, done a check-in on the region's needs. And it has been broken out by the different areas of housing. What we have found is that it is not located in any one given area that need, but that need is spread across a variety of housing, both types and income levels that are needed. As I've talked a lot before in the past, you know, that 80% or below, that is generally housing that we can at least seek public financing to assist with that. However, that 80% or up to what is been determined a need, 245% of area median income, does require more of a local contribution or a local assistance to make that housing As we have all experienced and even recently spoke of, we have seen the increase in housing prices pre-COVID, you know, 2018 to 2020. Certainly COVID accelerated some of the concerns and issues that we are seeing today. Really, one of the most noted is that as of 2021, nearly 40% of all home sales were cash offers. This poses a problem for some of our local workforce, who simply just cannot compete in that market. But before I turn this over to Paul Breckenridge with Facilities to talk a little bit more specifically about our Dollar Creek project, just wanted to provide a little bit of information on the investments that the county has made into housing, both directly through the county or through our partners, such as the Mardis Fund. So nearly 18 million has been invested in the Tahoe area. That has resulted in about 294 units, and we look forward to our, our future projects as we work collaboratively through those. With that, I think I'm turning it over to Paul.
Thanks, Shawna. Good afternoon. Paul Breckenridge, Deputy Director with Facilities Management, to talk about, give you the update on Dollar Creek Crossing. And we're, I'm excited to be here. This is the furthest along we've been with this project, and we continue to make great strides with next steps as we move forward with three major elements to the project. Affordable rental housing, workforce achievable for-sale housing, so is a first for us, is to try this achievable for-sale housing that has been done in other communities, and would be a first for us. And then a smaller community space item on, on just a few acres of one portion of the site. Up to 150 rental and for-sale units is that upper maximum that we're looking at, that we're studying. And just to, you know, as part of SEDRA's and Shawna's efforts to get to financial assistance with this project, PLHA funding, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant funding, to help with consultants and what-have-you studies up to this point. We are underway with the environmental review, and fingers crossed, all things hopeful, 2024, 25 construction, to get some of these needs met that Shawna mentioned earlier. Just a quick reminder on the site, that to the left is kind of the regional location there at Dollar Point, just off of the lake. To the right, the diagram there, north is up on that diagram with North Lake Boulevard, with its edge to the 11-point acre site to the south. We've got some great connections to the, both to North Lake Boulevard, but also the Buzz, the transit just off-site, our Dollar Creek Trail, just to the Firestone property to the east, and then neighborhood connections and the high school, just up into the, the Wesserly side of, of the site. Fantastic site, fairly flat, and trying to get as much out of the, the utility of the site as possible. So digging a little bit on our three components, the rental side, that we are looking at that 30% to 80% area median income as our target. Depending on funding availability, may reach up to 80% to 220%. And that's kind of the larger portion of the site, is that potential for up to 90 rental units with studios, one, two, three bedrooms, depending on where we land with our funding and what direction Related Pacific heads in with that portion of the project. Mentioned two-story modular buildings. You know, we're working with Related and Pacific on this one. They've broken ground on their Sugar Pine Village project, South Lake Tahoe. They're already in, or close to offsite fabrication, modular construction for those units in Vallejo. So they would fabricate Vallejo, ship them to the site, not worry as much about the seasonal construction process that we have here in the area. And we're hoping to do that with Dollar Creek as well. Save some money, save some time. The for-sale housing, 80% to 245% area median income, one to two, three bedrooms, town homes, fairly small footprint, based on that, that, you know, coverage issue, which is very precious, if you will, maybe even some cottages, but we're leaning more toward those town homes. And then for some flexibility in those units, maybe a junior accessory dwelling unit within that, which would allow, you know, some differences in their dynamic in a family. Maybe it's a rental component, so allows some flexibility there for how those units are used. Then on the community service side, 5,900 square feet is kind of where we landed, at what is the, a good size for that use. And we're currently thinking about maybe daycare or library at that location on that corner, again, with the, the trailhead just outside of Tahoe City, and then next to the transportation, kind of the gateway into the site on that side of the project. Consultant studies, we're underway, and we have done lots of this up to this point over the last couple, three years. Lots of work to get to the place where we feel we've got the site plan kind of narrowed in with all of these consultants that have come to help us with this, this not, it is a complex site, and so we feel that all the work up to this point has gotten us to a good fit with the various components we have. Related Pacific, we continue to work with them. We meet with them on the regular. They've been a great partner with helping us figure out what the best mix is and moving forward with the project. Lots of stakeholder coordination, even more robust now with the CEO's office here in Tahoe, with EPW, with all the stakeholders that have a potential part in what is probably several mini projects within this project, to keep this moving forward at a good pace. So we've got site plan development. We'll, we'll be talking about that here in just a minute. Last, we were with your board. We did have an amendment to the Related Pacific ERNA with our fourth amendment, moving forward with consultant drawings, the entitlement drawings and entitlement documentation that gets us to that next step sometime next year. And we are underway with our environmental review. So the current site plan, and this is going to change as we get, move forward with that, that, those services in the ERNA that we just, I just talked about, that we have, again, to the south, North Lake Boulevard, Fabian, to the east, Village Drive, or to the west, and then further up, Polaris, to the, to the very top of the screen. We are looking at Dollar Drive, Dollar Drive Extension is what we're calling it, to kind of cut through the site, provide access, and to alleviate some of the traffic concerns, transportation concerns through the site, and access to North Lake Boulevard. That then kind of creates a dividing line between what is the for-sale to the top of the site and the rental housing to the south, with the community service element, again, that 5,900 square feet element. with the the community service element, again, that fifty-nine hundred square feet element just out of the corner in North Lake and Dollar Drive. One, maybe one other thing to to show here, that part of the project with that roadway extension is to connect the neighborhood to the west to both the transportation, the community service, and the Dollar Creek Trail to the east with a trail that is part and parcel and partnered with that roadway connection as it goes through the site. Zeroing in on the lower portion of the site, we see this is our Phase One, which is the affordable rental area, housing area. So these are two-story buildings that are spread throughout the site with our certain, you know, expected coverage in mind with the units that we talked about, that we've we're using a model that is, again, that what we saw at Sugar Pine Village, we see it at I think, a project in Truckee that Related Pacific or Pacific has worked on as well. So we're looking to learn from those things and bring that same kind of attention and knowledge, wisdom to this site as well. To the upper side of the parcel, again, the Through Drive, the Dollar Drive Extension to the bottom of the page there with the for-sale units, kind of around that Ring Road with the open space in between. Just to give you some comparables, just to give you some idea of some of the current costs that we're seeing as we get to a place, as we move through kind of our next steps and come back and see your board to talk about funding and feasibility, that Freshman Hollow, that was the project I was thinking of with the modular construction. So the first three projects are affordable rental housing, Sugar Pine and Freshman are Pacific projects, Related Pacific for Sugar Pine. But these are some of the numbers that we're seeing with those, four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand per unit up to Sugar Pine with all the development costs up to seven to eight hundred. So it's not a, for the faint of heart, to do affordable housing, as as we're saying. So again, we're in the lake, the basin, you know, add prevailing wage on top of that, you know, there's some complexity associated with just getting these projects done in in the basin. Hopkins Village is that deed restricted for-sale townhomes model that we have, that's non-pervailing wage, just because of its private backing, I believe, is is where we landed on that, seven hundred to seven fifty thousand per unit for those townhomes. And then for our project, we're currently trending at, for the affordable side, that seven fifty to eight hundred fifty thousand for the rental side of things, and then upwards beyond that for potentially that deed restricted where we most likely will need that that bigger gap funding. And just to mention the prevailing wage, that there is a significant amount that we're seeing at the lake, and it might not be thirty percent, maybe it's more like fifteen from what we're hearing from others, but it is substantial to construct using public dollars. So funding strategies for all three, they're different. And for the rental apartments, we're already looking at applications for funding going into next year with Related Pacific based on timeframes and application deadlines. So those are the components that we'll see as we come back to your board to talk about when it comes to funding and feasibility, much like we did for the Mercy Housing Project. The for-sale housing, that we are going to be reliant on more of that local funding, and there's going to be a big ask on the gap funding. Not sure where that's all going to land, but to get to where we've got folks that are living in the basin with achievable housing, these are some of the the things we're going to have to do to get there. And then for the smaller community service, we've already looked at state grants, and we'll continue to look at state grants for potentially a location or a project out of that corner, and we'll continue to push for finding those funds for that side of the the site. Timeline, so a little bit of background, from two thousand and nineteen, that's when the site was acquired, when we saw your board approve the the acquisition. We did have at the time quite a bit of community outreach, and that's one common thread that I do want to emphasize, that back in two thousand and nineteen through to today, we've had quite a bit of outreach that we have gone out to the community. It's been a little bit of a lull within the last year, there hasn't been a whole lot of change to the site plan, if you will, but as we ramp up with our current changes and getting to our entitlement drawings, we will be reaching out to the community to make sure they are engaged and they see that we are listening and addressing what they've come back with on concerns and issues that we should be addressing. Let's see, and we're looking twenty twenty-three, getting those applications going. I think at the end of the day, next year, we are very hopeful, we've got some big goals we're meeting weekly, several meetings a week to get this pushed forward, and hoping to get to those applications where we can find and nail downs for that Phase One state funding, federal funding to to get this and move forward. So next steps, continue with the environmental review, estimated to take us into twenty twenty-three. The pre-development activities that we're kicking off here within the next week or two, I believe, with Related Pacific and their extended consultant team, design review, including for TRPA, we're in talks with them into into next year. Affordable rental housing grant applications as soon as we can into twenty-three, twenty-four. Those lag because you you apply and then wait, and hopefully you get pulled for your tax credits, much like we did Mercy, we got a surprise on Mercy Housing, and that moved very quickly, had to move into construction drawings quickly, where hopefully we'll be in that range to get those, get that part of the project going. And then, fingers crossed, two asterisks, we've not just one asterisk, but two asterisks on that, that we get contingent upon funding approval by your board and all things associated with those three parts of the project, Phase One in particular, we'll get going in twenty twenty-four.
All right, I'm just going to keep us going here. So transportation, you know, we think about sustainability. We talk a lot about sustainability here in Eastern Placer. Transportation takes a focus in that. You know, Supervisor Wygant, you mentioned this earlier today, just, you know, we think about transportation needs a little differently, or kind of more in line with where the state is going around VMT metrics and lessening our impact of building more roads. We think about mobility, and so a lot of focus here on trails around transit, around transit options. So, you know, I think Ryan Decker is going to give you an overview of the Fannie Bridge project. The complete streets portion of that project is definitely, as Supervisor Gustafson mentioned, a critical piece that, you know, continues to elevate our mobility needs in the region. So with this, I'll hand it over to Ryan.
Thanks, Stephanie. Hello again, Board, Ryan Decker, Engineering Manager with the Department of Public Works. I was before your board earlier today to talk accounting and funding, so I'm excited now to kind of get into the meat and potatoes and the exciting part of the project and kind of talk to you about some of the background of this project, the big picture goals, scope, and next steps. And one of the reasons we highlighted this project was it's a great example of how leveraging funding and partnerships with others and transportation can really transform a region, and this is a good example of that. So just kind of an overview for the entirety of the group here, the Fannie Bridge project is, its location is in the North Shore Gateway that is Tahoe City. This is, if you have driven through, and I'll get into some of the details of what has been constructed, you've seen a lot of of where this is. But really, its location is one of the first places a lot of visitors and locals and everybody sees as they come to the Tahoe Basin, and that is this area of Tahoe City. The goals of the project have have been steadfast in improving pedestrian bicycle mobility in the in the region, traffic circulation, evacuation, safety and redundancy of area of the area, and also transit connections and connections to the transit center that are right in the middle of this project. Another element was to rebuild the Fannie Bridge and provide this opportunity for a complete streets district that would be county-owned roadway to be able to utilize that to reinvigorate the community and allow for more community events. And as I mentioned, providing a second Truckee River Bridge. Some of the background and the history is, it kind of goes back to the nineties and before my time here. But nineties, this was first envisioned and planned and started to show up in some of the planning documents of the time. Carrying on into two thousand and thirteen was a really major milestone where the Tahoe Transportation District, TTD, partnered with FHWA to the Federal Highway Administration to kind of leverage some of these Federal Land Access Plan, FLAP, grant funds. And that really moves us into the more modern times of this project and implementation. So in October of two thousand and sixteen, FHWA awarded the initial construction contract for the project. And the portions of that project that were completed by the end of two thousand and nineteen include a new bridge over Truckee River, which was right here, that didn't exist at the time, pedestrian and bicycle facilities around that bridge and under that bridge to improve those connections to the existing trail network. The Tahoe City bypass, which is this whole section over here, that allows for kind of north-south traffic to bypass this heavily congested area of town. The Western Roundabout here and the Eastern Roundabout, which are the two legs of that new bypass that allow traffic to kind of flow a little more smoothly through that area. Parts that aren't on the map here are the Dollar Creek Trail, which is up by Dollar Creek, and the housing project that was just mentioned is right next door to that trail segment that was constructed utilizing these funds and county-provided funds as match. And a section of the Meeks Bay Bike Path was also part of the construction of this project. Due to some cost overruns and contract issues and claims, some of the remaining scope had to be removed from the existing contract and moved forward in its own separate area. These remaining items are the Roundabout at the Y intersection, which is where SR twenty-eight and SR eighty-nine join in Tahoe City, right there at the Save Mart. The Fannie Bridge itself, the actual Fannie Bridge that is currently fairly narrow and over ninety years old, only contains one piece of narrow sidewalk for all of the pedestrian activity in the area. The new Fannie Bridge would include, and this bottom shows it a little bit, but sidewalks on both sides that are larger, along with bicycle facilities, bike lanes, so that it's no longer a pinch point in this area. The third part is these complete streets improvements, which these are south of the Fannie Bridge area, kind of looking down on this picture here. They include, you know, additional sidewalk, additional parking, bike lanes through the area, and really formalizing this this area into a more complete streets, pedestrian and bicycle active transportation zone through here. So as we discussed, and I'll actually stay here, Items One and Two were in discussion this morning to move forward as kind of that reduced scope alternative to be able to move this forward, which is the Y Roundabout and the Fannie Bridge replacement. And that also includes all of the sidewalk connections and Class Two bike lanes that go with that. But what is not currently funded is this Phase Three. And I will make a quick note that, you know, bids are are unknown at this time, so we may be returning to the board to to modify any of those other funding arrangements as those bids are received next year. Moving to the next slide here, our next step. So we did talk about funding quite a bit earlier this morning, so I won't go into it too in-depth. We did discuss how any of the remaining scope, we're going to continue these complete streets to pursue those, pursue funding for those to be able to deliver the entirety of the project. Moving to schedule, this has been in flux a little bit. We had hoped to go out to advertise this year. Unfortunately, with the continuing resolution and the lack of a federal budget, the FLAP funding is not fully available at this time, and so the FHWA has pushed that schedule out until potentially midsummer before they feel they could be fully funded to be able to go out for bids and likely construct next year. So we do have a little bit more time to try to acquire more funding to fully fund the entirety of the project, and we will continue to do that and move that project forward as a whole. One thing that's not on here as far as funding is really how much this project has leveraged. So the total amount to date is approximately fifty-six million that has gone into this project as a whole. Of that fifty-six million, about forty-six of that is Federal Land Access Program, FLAP funding. Three million in state funds and then approximately seven point two in local funds have been used to leverage that fifty-six million to move this project forward. And really, that's the piece of this, of this regionally significant and critical transportation project and how we foresee being able to do that in other areas of our region. So with that, that's the transportation section, and I'll hand it back off to you.
All right, last but certainly not least, we're going to highlight recreation. I promise I'm only going to use the partner word one more time, but recreation, open space, parks, a partnership with both the Tahoe City PUD and the North Tahoe PUD over the years, and so Andy Fisher is going to kick it off, really kind of make a connection between our Parks and Trails Master Plan, which your board recently adopted, and the work that the PUDs are doing to really advance sections of that. So with that, I'll hand it to Andy.
Thank you, Stephanie. Andy Fisher, here with Steve Gayfield, our Director with the Department of Parks and Open Space. On a brisk Tahoe fall morning, not unlike this one in two thousand and sixteen, your board gave direction to our then-division, now a department, to begin the first-ever Park and Trail Master Plan for Placer County. And you also approved a contract with Design Workshop of South Lake Tahoe to help us with that, to do the professional services associated with that Park and Trail Master Plan. And that Master Plan was successfully completed and adopted by your board in May that you will, that you'll recall. That process, that Master Plan, the first plan we had done in a hundred and sixty years of being a county, reflected a change in leadership. Over years, I've been around long enough to recall that there had been thoughts of doing a Master Plan earlier in early years. Kind of an unwillingness to cooperate stopped those efforts, and I think we've seen a change in leadership throughout all of the local agencies, and I think particularly encouraging in the east. The entire five, little over five-year process was really a very cooperative and kind of a joyful process in which all of the local agencies, including and state and federal agencies, came together. We heard from all of the local agencies, regardless of boundary. We heard from multiple focus groups in this area. We did surveys throughout Placer County with over three thousand participants. And we heard a very unified consistency of voice for what people wanted in the east, all of, throughout the county, but particularly in the east. We heard folks love the trails that they use, and we heard the desire, particularly in the east, of folks wanting indoor recreation. And that was unified throughout surveys, it was unified throughout meetings. And it did bring us to a successful completion where the county in our Park and Trail Master Plan identified our own capital improvement projects, where we as an agency, Placer County, focused on trails. And we acknowledged the desire up here for the indoor recreation. But we also acknowledged that for our part, we did not see the the funding stream, how that was going to come together, the feasibility. And so we've just been very pleased that since the conclusion of our plan, the public utility districts, Tahoe City and North Tahoe, have really taken up that baton. They've heard the same message from our common constituents, and they have gone into much more detail, that you'll hear from them in just a moment, about feasibility and what they've learned from the constituents up here for indoor recreation. And I'm going to turn it over to them in just a minute, but I wanted to hover on the trails component of our plan for just a moment, because some very exciting things are happening in trails. You'll see the trail map of everything going on in trails in Eastern Placer County there up on the screen. Black trails are paved trails, green and brown trails are dirt trails. To focus on the the black trails, the paved trails, the the loop around the North Tahoe communities all the way up into Truckee, or what we call the Resort Triangle. Within the last couple of years, we've been able to do ribbon cuttings on the Dollar Creek Trail. Brian Decker and Kansas McGowan and our Public Works Office in Tahoe have worked very hard to deliver that trail, and we cut the ribbon on that one a couple of years ago. They're also working very hard on the the dotted lines or the trails that aren't there yet, the the solid lines are the ones that are. Ryan's office is working on the North Tahoe Trail to connect Dollar Point to North Tahoe Regional Park, getting closer to Kings Beach, also working on the stretch from Olympic Valley northward to Truckee, getting into environmental review. Another agency that I want to recognize for their leadership is the North Star Community Service District, who has taken a lead on the Mardis Valley Trail. We were able to cut the ribbon on a on a four-mile stretch of trail. We were able to cut the ribbon on a four-mile stretch of trail just in September. So all of that trail connecting all of the North Tahoe, and actually all the way around Lake Tahoe with a separated paved trail is all coming to fruition right now, piece by piece. And so it's been exciting to be able to cut ribbon on some of those sections and see progress. Also, Lisa Carnahan, Ted Rel, and our office working hard on additional sections of the Martis Valley Trail, the Immigrant Trail going from Donner Memorial State Park, a dirt trail, over to King Vale, happening step by step. So trails are happening up here, and that's exciting because people want that. But with that, I also want to, I want to turn over now to Sean Barclay of Tahoe City PUD and Brad Johnson of North Tahoe PUD, a couple of very familiar names, to talk about how they have picked up that baton from our Park and Trail Master Plan and what they're learning and proposing for indoor recreation in the Tahoe area.
All right. Thanks, Andy. Good afternoon once again, Chair Gustafson, members of the Board. My name is Sean Barclay, the General Manager of the Tahoe City Public Utility District. I want to take a minute to recognize two of our Board members here today, Judy Friedman and John Pang, joining us today. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this brief update on this exciting project, as Andy mentioned, kind of a continuation of the Parks and Trails Master Plan that the county has done. So first, we just wanted to give you, as a Board, a brief overview of who we are and what we do, and continue this theme of partnerships that you've heard all day today. So the Tahoe City PUD, we were founded in 1938, one of the oldest local governments here in the lake. We do water and wastewater collection here, and rent a 31-square-mile service territory from the north shore where it abuts with my colleagues' district here at North Tahoe PUD, down along the west shore to Emerald Bay. Within that service area, we also provide recreation, active recreation, adult sports, youth sports programming, and we operate parks and facilities throughout that district. We also operate a 23-mile multi-use trail system, which Andy talked about, running along the lake. And we own, operate, and maintain many other facilities, including some that Placer County owns, and also properties and facilities owned by the school district, by state parks, and other public agencies. And I'll hand it over to my much taller colleague, Brad.
Thank you, Sean. Chair Gustafson, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to talk today. I'm Brad Johnson, the General Manager of the North Tahoe Public Utility District. We are TC PUD's younger brother to the north, if you will, very similar services, water, wastewater collection, recreation, parks, and facilities. Like Sean, a broad range of active recreation programming, parks, fields, courts, primarily located in our North Tahoe Regional Park, 100-plus-acre facility in Tahoe Vista, but then also our lakefront facility at the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area, and then, of course, the North Tahoe Event Center in downtown Kings Beach. Similar to Tahoe City PUD, we also partner with the county on maintenance of county-owned facilities within our boundaries. And we are very excited to partner on this project with both the Tahoe City PUD and Placer County. So the North Lake Tahoe Active Recreation Facility Needs Assessment and Feasibility Study. Back in 2020, the Tahoe City PUD and the North Tahoe PUD both realized that we needed to assess our active recreation offerings and facilities and the community's desire for reinvestment on a more regional basis. Rather than each of our districts working in silos, we kind of recognized we're more alike than we are different. And so when we evaluate recreation offerings for our region, we should evaluate those offerings collaboratively rather than independently. So we partnered on a contract to conduct public outreach, community surveys, and participation to identify the wants and needs of the community based, for community-based recreation. So prior to undertaking major reinvestment in our facilities, we really ought to understand what are the community expectations. In 2021, the district further partnered to advance the analysis into a deeper dive on the identified needs coming from that first effort, relative to the existing facilities, their conditions, industry best practices and trends, community demographics and geography, and then the economic impacts and viability of those identified needs. And so as you, as you look at this funnel, if you will, we're presently at the kind of menu of options and then beginning to roll it out. Importantly in this effort, we partnered with Placer County. Placer County generously granted our two districts a $75,000 tourism, or sorry, TOT Tourism Master Plan Grant. So Placer County is an important partner in this analysis.
All right. So important in this facility, or needs, active recreation needs facility assessment was to be, try to be very specific. So as Andy mentioned, the county's done a great job looking at master plans for trails, and so we really wanted to be specific. So we are, we're calling it active recreation, and what we mean by that is programmed facilities, courts, fields, swimming pools. So we're not, purposely not looking at open space, beaches, trails, more passive types of recreation. Also important and kind of a guiding concept of this study was to look at two major components, and one was to improve and renovate and study our existing facilities, to identify where the gaps are in service levels to our community around those existing facilities, and then to identify opportunities for new facilities that the community desires. So we really dug in deep, had the consultants look at our existing facilities for opportunities to improve and renovate those facilities, and those facilities range, like I said, from soccer fields and baseball fields, pickleball courts, tennis courts, our existing seasonal ice rink facility. So those were opportunities to reinvest in existing facilities in both of our districts. And then we looked at opportunities. We could look at building a skate park, there's no skate park in North Lake Tahoe, adding additional fields to meet capacity and meet demands for our youth sports and adult sports, pump tracks, volleyball, bocce, a number of different active recreation facilities. But the top of that list, and we heard this very clearly from our community, was the desire for an indoor recreation and aquatic center. And so we've worked through this analysis, the consultants have identified, using that community and stakeholder feedback that we did in Phase 1, that really the must-haves around that desired facility are an indoor gym, indoor court space, fitness and group exercise, a lap pool along with a leisure pool, party and wet classroom to support the operations in that center, and then lobby and lockers and support. There's also potential to enhance that facility with additional spaces, and that will depend on further stakeholder engagement and opportunities for funding. So continuing on, opportunity sites. So part of what this study did was look at where are these sites that we may be able to add to the existing inventory of amenities? So from the Tahoe City PUD's perspective, we own a couple of properties that are identified here on your screen, Kilner Park located along the west shore, there's some opportunities there to improve the existing pickleball and tennis court facilities. The restrooms are outdated and need to be replaced. The Tahoe City Community Center and Parklands is a property that our Board purchased a few years ago, was a former nursery property, it's about 11 acres, and it was purchased by our Board with the expressed intent of looking at what type of active recreation we may be able to construct in the future on this, on this property. So that property offers opportunities for playgrounds, dog parks, a little bit smaller type of active recreation facilities. And then, as your Board knows, we also are the owners and operators of the Tahoe City Golf Course and Winter Sports Park property. And so specifically, this study looked at enhancements that we could make to the existing bocce ball courts and seasonal ice rink. It didn't study improvements to the golf course facility itself.
Over at the Regional Park, reinvestment in existing facilities were identified, along with enhancement with potential new amenities. Terms of renovation, the existing fields, tennis courts were prioritized, and then enhancements with new basketball, outdoor basketball courts, which is a big gap across both districts, as well as dedicated pickleball courts and improvements in accessibility, walking paths, signage, and wayfinding throughout the park.
So an important, very important part of this study was the identification of the Placer County-owned Firestone property as a potential opportunity site for active recreation, and specifically for the construction, or potential for construction of a shared North Lake Tahoe Recreation and Aquatic Center. The reason that this site was identified, there's a number. This property is located centrally between the two districts' boundaries, it's located adjacent to the North Tahoe High School and Middle School, and located near, near public transit. So it's a very interesting opportunity site that we look forward to working with county staff and your Board moving forward in the next year to have discussions on how that might be used to meet some of the community's identified demands or needs.
So there's quite a bit of work to be done still. We're only midway through the study and a number of the next steps to come. So as Sean mentioned, additional public and stakeholder feedback on the identified opportunities. We want to test, did we hear you correctly? And what we came up with, does it resonate with our community members? Perhaps one of the most important steps, identifying funding options and the financial feasibility of these improvements. It's one thing for it to be a want and desire of our community, it's another thing to ensure that it is financially sustainable from an operating and construction, or capital construction standpoint. A big and important step, reviewing the viability of those funding opportunities, the operating costs of these amenities with both our Boards, the community, and then your Board at Placer County. And then we bake that all together and make a number of recommendations, set a series of priorities. And then we would roll into the public outreach component. We are confident that the identified improvements cannot be constructed with existing revenue streams. So this would likely result in some kind of ballot measure within the boundaries of our district, and we want to ensure that if that is proposed, there is strong community support prior to moving forward with that proposal. So this, this study does consider kind of assessing and understanding what the potential ballot measure would look like, the various funding mechanisms, and then it would be incumbent upon our two districts to kind of assess and understand community desire in that regard. Thank you. With that, Sean and I both appreciate this opportunity and your partnership in this effort.
Thank you. All right. Well, I'm going to close this out, this is a big item. But I think, just to highlight, again, you know, the amazing projects that our internal teams are working on, really driving forward towards implementation, as I mentioned earlier, and then also working with all of our partners here in the region to really bring critical infrastructure, critical projects, and discussions before our communities. So hopefully this has been helpful for you, it's told our Tahoe Placer story, maybe given you a little bit of a window of the world that Cindy and I live in every day here in Eastern Placer, and happy to answer any questions that you might have. Obviously, our team is here for that as well.
Thank you so much, and thanks for all the great presentations. There's so much effort going in to work up here, and no shortage of meetings and efforts ongoing all the time. Any questions from the Board members? I'm not seeing any. I would just like to thank you all for the great presentation. There's so much good work going on, and I'm sorry that some people left the room and didn't hear about some of the other projects that are ongoing. I know the frustration that they feel, but yet we're looking at trying to build a whole community with transportation systems, housing solutions, recreation. And so a lot of energy going in, and I just want to thank all the staff, especially Stephanie. I know you worked really hard to try to avoid that situation previously, and obviously did your very best. So I just, again, thank all the staff for your efforts. I did want to bring up that, I don't know if you all see next door, and I'm looking at you because there was a post on the Dollar Creek Project. I'll get it to you. Again, there's a lot of posting going on, and yet people aren't showing up, as far as I know, to the meetings to give us feedback, but it's being posted in social media, no surprise, that's the venue people go to, but we'd really like to hear those concerns. I think the Board would really like to hear those concerns on specific projects, so, so that we're aware. So I'll just encourage that as well. Do we have any other? Oh, okay, we have a member of the public, and if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to this item. Judy's going to come back up.
Works for me.
She's making her way. She was hesitating.
I didn't know if you were going to do Zoom first. So never follow Brad. I'm still Judy Friedman, even though it's afternoon already. This presentation shows what we can do when we work together and have vision for the community. I want to thank you for your contribution to getting the Joint Needs Assessment done. We did receive some TOT for that, and by collaborating and working together, that's how our community moves forward, and I want to say thank you for your contribution to that.
Thank you. And we have a member of the public on Zoom?
Honey, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Honey Ball, I'm a local designer and engineer in Tahoe City. I'm also a resident in the Highlands neighborhood. I just wanted to comment on the Dollar Creek Crossing project. The Dollar Creek Crossing Committee stopped optimization with the community when COVID began in early 2020, and there hasn't been any community outreach since then. The community needs stopped in mid-2020. I reached out to get more information, and I just informed that the project couldn't go forward. So I'm just wondering when the community will be happy about this, because this way in this planned development, it greatly impacts the neighborhood. As you know, the Highlands neighborhood is a full-time residence in the city, and it also occupies the high school and middle school, and it's at the top of all that. So I'm just concerned, I know there's a huge concern about the traffic, and how it will be mitigated through the neighborhood streets, Davian, Watson, and Martin. We all know what happens when people reroute through Fairway in Tahoe City and make traffic along Highway 28. And I just want to make sure that these design companies are looking into that, as well as the increased parking. I think that the off-street parking needs to be multiplied by three. Some of these low-income apartments will house more than two people, and they will have more than two cars. And I, you know, that needs to be really, really looked at. I think there are alternative, alternate solutions to spread out housing around the various properties that cost a lot, rather than just consolidating them into one property. I would say we need more missing middle housing, which would include single-family homes in the world of $500,000 as a price point. The low-income apartments we posed at the top of Bell Hill, two miles out of the Tahoe Center, I feel like it poses a challenge with, you know, working with the current transit, the public transportation that's subpar, and getting to grocery store, or getting to the bank, or doing the things that everybody needs to do. I just hope that the Board will cooperate with North Tahoe Committee, Tahoe City PUD, and listen to them and the community needs when they say in the recreation center, in more pool, and proposing this Firestone property as an ideal location. I think that's a great solution.
Ms. Walsh, I do need you to wrap up your comments, your time has expired, but could you wrap up?
Yeah, I, I was just asking, you know, I'm pointing to a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing from the people in this neighborhood. And I encourage everyone to show up for this meeting, to voice their concerns. And I just hope that there's community involvement and outreach in the future for this project.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have other public commenters?
Rippon, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Hi, this is Rhonda. Are you there?
Yes, we are.
Hi, this is Rhonda Kermitz, and I have to say, first of all, I completely feel the same way with the other speaker. I've been wondering what happened. I feel like this project fell off the face of the planet, and I have been going to all of those meetings, and I saw recently, I just haven't been getting emails or anything else on this project. So I'm also wondering if there's been any new reevaluation of the Highlands area after everybody moved there during COVID, because already we have an increase in traffic, which is clear. And I'm just wondering if anybody sits on the corner of a village or mill at 7:30 in the morning and again at 8:00 in the morning with all of the high schools, middle schools, everything goes up there, you have two different drop-offs and then again? Since we've never dealt with it on that, so I really, really want to see some, some reasonable responses to these and how, again, I said this before, once you do this and tear down that whole section of forest, you can't take it back. And we don't have any more out of it. We want, you can fix it.
Rhonda, we do need you. Rhonda, your time has expired. Could you wrap up your comments?
Yeah, I'm just saying, you can't take it back. And we already have issues there. In the summertime, it's backed down. On a snow day, it's backed down. On a, you know, it looks good on paper, but we live in the mountains and you need to be reasonable about what that corner can handle. So please, give us some answers.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Stephanie, did you want to address kind of the public process for the questions that came up on Dollar Creek or Paul or Shawna, one of, one of you?
Yeah, I'll kick it off maybe then hand it to Paul. But I'll just say, you know, there is a website. Our Community Development Resource Agency maintains a website that we do use for communication on the project. We've been actively updating that website with recent information. There's been a number of emails and concerns that we've received, questions. So we are forming an FAQ list to try to answer some of these questions and then also targeting some, some of your MAC meetings coming up, Cindy, to really get the message out as we work forward through this process. So I'll let Paul add anything that I missed.
Thanks, Stephanie. Yeah, that's, that's, you know, I guess I can say part of why we're now jumping into the, the next phase of delineation for the site plan is to address things like snow storage, parking, how that's going to work on the site, and traffic circulation has been a big part of what we've been doing the last many months with our consulting. We've got some local consulting on the traffic side that we're looking at, working with to make sure that we are addressing issues in and out of that neighborhood with both the addition of, of our project and for the, the current needs in and out of that space. So wherever we end up with a, there will be most likely a, some kind of an enhancement at Dollar Drive in our project. We're working through that and we're looking for the best solutions for that. So traffic and transportation is, is a huge concern of ours, and we've heard it from the community, taking it to heart, and it's going to end up further into our plans as we move forward.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. We don't have all the answers now, but we will be coming back to the public with addressing the concerns that we heard. And I'm so glad they called in and were paying attention in the meeting, so that's very helpful. So with that, we're done with this item, I believe. I think the board needs a lunch break. I can hear stomachs growling near me. But we're going to take a quick break. We'll be back at 1:30 for our timed item, and we will be going to close session while we're having lunch, so I'll let county council announce that.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of existing litigation.
Okay, the board has returned from closed session. County council will give our report.
The board meant in closed session to consider one item of existing litigation, Enray Kenneth Addison. The board heard a report and authorized settlement in the matter. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. And now we are to move to our 1:30 timed item. This is item number five on our agenda, and county council has a report to give on this item as well.
It has just come to our attention that the noticing for this item was faulty. It noticed Auburn versus Tahoe. As a result, the only action that the board can take today is to continue this matter to a date and time certain. My understanding from the clerk of the board is the time and date available is November the 8th at 2:00 PM. There will be no public testimony taken because the notice was faulty.
Okay. So again, our apologies to anyone who came for that item, and we will hear it November 8th at 2:00 PM. Zoom options are available for all our meetings, too. So do I have a motion to continue this to November 8th at 2:00 PM?
Go move. Second?
I'll move. He seconds.
Okay, Gore and Wygant, thank you very much. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, again, our apologies on that. And it will be in Auburn at the Board of Supervisors Board Meeting Room. Then we'll move now back to item 7C on our agenda. This is about the roundabouts at the I-80 and Bell Road Interchange Project. Kyle Friedrichs here. Good afternoon, Kyle.
Good afternoon. Their loss is my gain as far as time goes, so thank you for that. Hi, my name is Kyle Friedrich. I'm one of the engineers assigned to the Bell Road Roundabouts at I-80, and I'm here today to ask your board to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works or does need to execute contract amendment number three with GHD, contract number 999, for $584,830 for a total contract amount not to exceed $2,575,444, and to execute future amendments to the contract upon risk management and county council concurrence up to $257,544, consistent with the public contract code 20142 and county procurement policy. In 2019, the county contracted with GHD to design this roundabout project. We've been working for the last three years with Caltrans to facilitate selecting an alternative and clearing it environmentally through NEPA and SEQA. Along the way, we've had several rounds of comments from Caltrans, internal Placer County departments, and from the public during circulation of our environmental document. These comments have triggered some additional studies, reports, exhibits, aesthetic renderings, and have also led to some scope increase for GHD that we would like to capture with this amendment. Amendments one and two were just contract facilitation. They just authorize optional tasks and changed the standard charge rates, so they did not add any contract dollars to this. So amendment three is the first real change to this contract. In reviewing it, we feel that they are justified in their request because the contract documents have grown pretty significantly as a result of this, specifically with the stage construction and drainage in the area because of the traffic volumes and the tight geometrics of the project conditions. So with that, I'd like to open up to any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate the report, and I'm looking to see, are there any questions or comments from the board members on this item? I'm not seeing any. We want it done quickly.
Sounds great.
But wait, we have public comment to take. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay.
I don't think 2005 is necessarily quickly, but that's better than later.
Well, keep going, and let's get it done. Yeah, okay.
Well, I'll go ahead and move approval of the item.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisors Gore and Holmes. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move then to item eight on our agenda, 8A Capital Projects Advisory Committee, page 135 of our packet, and this is Lindsay Romack. Hi.
Hello. Hi, Chair Gustafson and board members. My name is Lindsay Romack. I'm with the County Executive Office, and the action requested of you today in this item is to adopt, is to adopt a resolution amending Resolution 2018-009, establishing the Capital Projects Advisory Committee, also known as the CAP Committee. Megan is distributing the resolution. There were a few revisions made after the publication of your staff report, which I will read into the record after I provide some background, but just so you have that in your hands, it doesn't change the action request, requested or the intent of any of this. There was just some revisions that needed to be made. So as a little background, your board back in 2017 approved the Capital Projects Advisory Committee, which I'll just call CAP from here on out, in 2017. And then in 2018, you approved the resolution establishing the CAP Committee. In that resolution, it outlined the purpose of the CAP Committee, the guiding documents that the CAP Committee looked to, as well as some other parameters on the CAP Committee. So the purpose, as you probably remember, of the CAP Committee is to make recommendations to your board on the expenditure of transient occupancy tax to go to capital and infrastructure projects here in Eastern Placer County. And they are specifically tasked with looking at the 2% TOT that is charged in addition up here in Eastern Placer County to the 8% that's charged countywide. So as you also remember, back in June, voters were asked to reauthorize that 2% in June of 2022, which they did, passing that by 89% support. And so the established in the documents, the guiding documents for the CAP Committee that were included in the CAP resolution that you passed back in 2018, look to the Tourism Master Plan, which was passed by your board in 2015, and the TOT Investment Policy, which was passed by your board in 2017. So those are the two documents that they look to, again, to make recommendations to you. In the ballot language that was passed by voters this June, there were two additional items that were called out specifically that were not identified in the Tourism Master Plan. Those are addressing workforce housing needs as well as addressing trash issues and trash mitigation opportunities. So because of that, we wanted to come to you and add that the Measure A ballot language, again, that was passed by voters in June, be added as one of the guiding documents for the CAP Committee. This would allow them to potentially make recommendations on funding for workforce housing and trash mitigation projects. So that was the main impetus of coming to you today. And then while we were going through the resolution, there were just a few other minor changes that we wanted to make. Those include the correct names for entities in Olympic Valley after some of the renaming. Also clarification that the county and the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association co-convened the committee. Previously, it had been called co-chaired, and that caused some confusion because there is an actual chair and vice chair of the committee, so this is just, you know, clarifying that. Also clarification on committee terms. They will all be three years moving forward, and that meeting locations rotate, and they may be chosen based on the technology needs for that meeting. That was something we didn't think about back in 2018. So with that, I did want to go ahead then and move into the resolution itself, because as I mentioned, there have been some revisions after the staff report was published. So I will go ahead and, and read those now into the record as advised by county council. So I will just note at the top, the resolution language. In the matter of a resolution amending Resolution 2018-009, establishing the Capital Projects CAP Committee, that has been revised slightly, so it reads that way. Also, if you look on, still on page one, in the second whereas clause, there was an "and" added at the end of that that was left off unintentionally. On page two, we adjusted the language on the fourth whereas and are clarifying that this resolution is amending Resolution 2018-009 and, to the extent of any conflict between Resolution 2018-009 and this res- new resolution, this resolution shall control. So just clarifying if there is any issues with that, this new amended resolution will be the one we look to. And then the final change on the very last page, the very last clause, meeting location, we just eliminated the word limited access to technology. So now it just reads, "Meeting locations may be selected based on desire or need for virtual meetings and access to technology." So those are the changes, and then I will just reiterate, the action requested of you today is to adopt a resolution amending Resolution 2018-009, establishing the Capital Projects Advisory or CAP Committee. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Lindsay. Are there any questions? Supervisor Gore?
No, I don't have any.
Her green light was on. I don't have any questions. Is there, are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you. Motion Holmes, second Gore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Lindsay, great job. Thank you. So now we're on to 8B, page 145 of our packet, and this is a short-term rental program implementation update. We thought we were going to have very limited time. We have a little more time now, so.
Great news. You can hear about this.
Yeah, I know you've prepared for it, so thank you.
Hello again, members of the board. I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Tahoe SEDRA office, and we are here today to provide you with an update of our short-term rental program. We were last before your board updating you on this program in the end of June, and since then, we have started our adaptive management, and we have also hired an S T R program manager. And so I am happy to announce Emily Setzer's promotion to serve as the Tahoe SEDRA's Short-Term Rental Program Manager. So with that, I'm going to toss it to her, let her take it, take it from here, so. Emily?
Hello. Good afternoon. Emily Setzer, Principal Planner at SEDRA in Tahoe City. I'd also like to say that Doug Jastro is here with me from Revenue Services in case you have questions related to TOT. Jasmine Carr, our newly promoted Staff Services Analyst, could not be with us today. And I'd also like to just recognize our admin tech, Cheryl Cattell. So we have a great team for this program going forward. What I'll go over today is just a little background on the ordinance, our adaptive management approach, permit and co-compliance data, results from a community survey that we we released, information from some of our regional partners, feedback from the Stakeholder Working Group that we commenced, policy trends from other resort towns to see what they're doing and how they're managing their short-term rental programs, and then I'll have an opportunity for board feedback and next steps. So just as a refresher, this ordinance first came about in 2019. We had that moratorium during COVID in 2021, and that was lifted, and your board adopted the new ordinance in February of 2022, so that's the ordinance we have today. That took effect in March, and so we've really been watching for almost close to a year now, this new, the effects of this new ordinance and how it's being implemented. We also held our first Stakeholder Working Group meeting in September, and we will be holding those quarterly, so our next one will be December 6th, and that is a group consisting of full-time residents, STR owners, property managers. We had fire districts. We had representatives from the industry, like our consultant, Deckard. So we really tried to get a diverse group for that stakeholder group. To talk about our adaptive management approach, which was a big priority with this ordinance from your board, we had that first stakeholder group, and we got a lot of great feedback from that. It went really well. Cindy was graceful enough to present us, or to join us with that meeting. We also have had numerous smaller meetings with staff to talk with full-time residents, STR owners, fire district staff, and property managers. So anyone who wants to meet and talk with me about our program, I'm happy to do that, so we've been doing that pretty regularly. We are also working with our co-compliance team and our IT staff to track data, and so we're closely watching the number of short-term permits, our complaints, our citations. We're even working with Revenue Services and our consultant to track the number of nights that these STRs are rented each year. And then we are really learning from what's going on and what's working in other jurisdictions, what approaches are other jurisdictions taking. So we have met with staff from the town of Truckee, from city of South Lake Tahoe, Eldorado County, Douglas County, and then we're also watching trends from other resort towns who are also dealing with short-term rentals and figuring out the best way to manage them. And then all of this is getting wrapped up into potential STR ordinance revision or refinement, and that is not an overhaul of the program by any means, but we do have some minor clarifications and potentially some feedback to incorporate from the Stakeholder Working Group that we would plan to bring forward this winter. So I'll go over some of our permit status. We have issued almost 2,500 permits. We have pending, we see a 678 pending permit applications. So just total, we're hovering around that 3,100 number. Just a reminder, our cap was set at 3,900, so we have had less, fewer permit applications come in than we expected. We think some people have dropped out of the program. That cap was about 21% of our housing stock, but we haven't hit it yet. We have, of that 3,100 so far, we have about 118 STR permits who are people who live in those units full-time up here, so it's their full-time house. They may rent it, say, Christmas, New Year's, Fourth of July, et cetera. We were receiving a lot of applications, about 160 a week over the summer, and that has slowed down to about 13 per week this fall, so that rate of application has slowed. We did send, in addition to a community survey to the overall broader community, we sent a survey to about 600 previous permit holders who did not renew. We only got 21 responses, so I don't have a lot of great feedback to share on that, but we're trying to get some information about non-renewal trends. I think I'm stuck. There we go. We have a co-compliance team who we are still recruiting and trying to staff up and get our team going. We have been collecting a lot of data from our co-compliance team, so this top graph is complaints over time, and this, the data on this slide spans from the launch of this new ordinance on April 1st to October 1st. So you can see that complaints over time obviously hit a peak in July and August, which is heavier visitation up here. We've had 152 complaints in that timeframe, and then about the last couple of weeks, we've only had a couple, so it really has slowed down, but that's pretty predictable because this is our slow time. It's kind of a shoulder season up here. It does give staff time to do patrols and kind of go through some more of the investigative side of their jobs and work on data and the paperwork side that is more regulatory and not exciting.
Emily, before you move on, can I ask a question on this slide?
Sure.
Or is that okay?
Yeah.
If we ask as we go, because I realize I forget what I'm going to ask. We heard so much testimony on the impacts in the neighborhoods of short-term rentals when we were adopting the ordinances and the amendments to the ordinance, and I know our code enforcement folks are doing a great job getting out there, but when we look at a number of complaints, 152, I think in the future, it's good to put that in context of how many nights homes were rented during the same period, because thousands of homes were rented this summer for multiple nights with tens of thousands of guests, and so I think it helps put it in perspective. I'm not diminishing those who do live next door to a problem, short-term renter, rental, but we are putting a lot of resources into this and refining as we go, but I do think that's important to capture.
Yeah.
Because I do feel our tracking is doing a great job now, and I appreciate that.
Sure, we can combine that with our data we get from Revenue Services and Doug's team to provide more context.
May I also ask a question on this slide, and that is, of those complaints, is there any tracking on, like, one property in particular? Do you, are there complaints on multiple times on one property or several properties? And are you looking at that? Because then that'll give you a better way to target those properties. I'm sure you are, but I'm just curious if you're seeing that.
Yeah, that's a good point. We are working with our IT staff to further narrow down and be able to look at this, so that is one of the things we've talked to them about. Yeah. With the launch of the new ordinance, our co-compliance staff was heavily focused on education, to really educate visitors and property owners and managers about this new ordinance. We have transitioned that into more enforcement as well, and we do have a breakdown of complaints by violation type. So of that 152 over this six-month time period, 77 of those were noise. The majority was noise, and then second majority was trash, and then parking. So we are tracking that as well. We have a short-term rental website. We have a hotline, which we're trying to figure out ways to share better with the community. That was feedback from our Stakeholder Working Group. So that is a hotline that is 24-hour. Anyone can call if they have complaints or concerns about a short-term rental. People can also email us at strcompliance@placer.ca.gov, and we will respond there. We did streamline our response and outreach by removing the Placer Connect option from our website, and the reason was it is a slower response time for our officers to be able to see that feedback from the Placer Connect app, and it is a much, will give, be able to provide a much quicker response time through the phone number and the hotline. So we're really trying to emphasize the hotline because that is the best way to stream feedback to us. We released a community survey from August 23rd to September 2nd that went out to 635 respondents, and about half lived in East Placer and about half owned a short-term rental in East Placer. There were 10 questions. The survey responses are attached to your staff report if you want to go into detail on that. We asked about their personal experience with short-term rentals, feedback about the new ordinance and how it's comparing to the old one, if they've noticed improvements or any changes at all, feedback on our penalties, fines, and the cost of the program. And then also, we wanted to gauge whether they were familiar with our lease-to-locals program, because that's so closely tied to our housing stock and short-term rental. And just as a reminder, that was the incentive program that encourages homeowners to convert a short-term rental or a vacation home to a long-term rental. From that survey, we got a number of good key takeaways. We have found that the majority of East Placer residents have had short-term rental nuisances in their neighborhoods, and the majority of all respondents have not noticed decreases in short-term rental nuisances since the ordinance took effect. The majority of all respondents don't think the ordinance has improved the availability of workforce housing. East Placer residents think short-term rental fees and penalty fines aren't high enough. Meanwhile, the short-term rental operators think that the fees and fines are fair or too high, so that's.
We just got it in there.
Pretty predictable. We must have done it just right, yeah. And the majority of all respondents are familiar with lease-to-locals, which was really great. So over time, we'll be able to really kind of track that data and compare that to survey So I'll move on to some of the information we've received from our regional partners. We did talk with staff about how their programs are going at these different locations. So from city of South Lake Tahoe, just a reminder, they passed Measure T, which eliminated all short-term rentals from all residential areas except if they were their primary residence or if they were hosted, which is basically just a room in a home while the owner is present. Obviously, this has significantly decreased their disturbances from noise, parking, and trash. Their police department handles complaints, and they've been anecdotally collecting some data on how the conversions of those homes has been going trend-wise. About 40% of their homeowners have reported keeping the home as a second home, so that's about half of, you know, the homes that were previously used as short-term rentals. About a quarter switched to long-term rentals. Some are now used as primary residence, and some were just sold. From Eldorado County, they have not hit their cap yet, and this is due to, their cap was about 900 or 10% of their housing stock. That's due to the clustering policy, so they implemented a rule in which no new short-term rental permits would be issued if they were within 500 feet of an already existing short-term rental permit. It does apply over time through attrition, so it did not eliminate them all at once. They are currently conducting a fee study, and their code officers work Monday through Friday, so it is interesting to see how we all handle our programs a little bit different. Truckee has updated its ordinance twice in the last couple of years. Their cap is at about 9% of their housing stock. They currently have a waitlist. They did hit their cap. Staff have said that they don't really have data on why, but they tend to not get a lot of complaints from their short-term rentals, even though they're just our next-door neighbors. They require slightly different fire protection requirements than ours. They use a fire safety self-certification that's required during registration, and we'll continue talking with all of these partners as well. Douglas County is one of the ones we've most recently talked to. Their cap was 600 permits, and they have a tiered system based off of whether it's owner-occupied, occupancy of 10 people or more, or a much larger home of 10 or more people. I should say 10 or less, actually. They also have neighborhood densities requirements, so that in certain neighborhoods, they can't hit more than a certain percentage of short-term rentals. And one thing that we've heard as a recommendation from Douglas County was the noise monitor technology. That's, there are monitors that they can place indoors and outdoors, say, near a hot tub, where it texts the local contact if the noise exceeds a decibel limit. So that's been a good suggestion for our program that people in Douglas County have So we have shared a lot of this information with our Stakeholder Working Group. So we shared information from our regional partners, and then we took information from them. So we asked them what is working well, what isn't, what could be improved, what suggestions do you have for us for our program, and really just tried to gauge any and all feedback from them. They liked the 500-foot clustering policy from Eldorado County. They liked limiting short-term rentals to certain commercial areas, and they also liked a one-year waiting period that is implemented in Truckee, so that's a one-year after a transfer or sale of a house to be able to get the short-term rental permit to limit investment sales. They are happy with our adaptive management program. We've gotten a lot of feedback that's positive about the board's ability and consideration of adapting this program over time. They really have responded well to our online application process, and we've gotten good feedback from our administrative team, so we really are building a good team up here. They've also recommended us in good transparency in the number of operators and STR data, and they've made some other suggestions in ways that we can improve our data as well. The stakeholder group has seen good responses and decreases in noise from our 9:00 PM quiet hours. It used to be 10:00 PM, so we have received good feedback from the community on that. They like the bare bins on the, or sorry, the magnets on the bare bins, and property managers have said it's easier to educate owners on the requirements of our program now. We've gotten good feedback about our co-compliance team as well and their follow-up and communication and their response time. When we asked them about areas for refinement, we got a number of suggestions. Some of these were for certain types of condos, like those that a conference might book. The ability for them to book more than a year in advance, sometimes that property may sell, so ways to consider the transfer in those situations. There were some suggestions to decrease our occupancy limits, suggestions to implement that 500-foot clustering policy. We've had some discussions about the ability to enforce lights, and not just from STRs, but overall, like a dark-skies ordinance for our community. We've also had suggestions to work more closely with our fire departments to allow for more time for that fire and life safety inspection. Those are due for many properties by March, so that is one of the reasons we will need to bring forward some revisions this winter before the renewal period, because not every property has had a chance or probably will get a chance to get that inspection in time. There's been a little bit of a backlog, so we're working through that, and we'll accommodate everybody. The Stakeholder Working Group also liked that one-year waiting period and noted that our cap is higher than our neighboring jurisdictions. They would like to work with us on collecting more data and breakdown between warnings and education and citations. They'd also like to see some of those stickers and magnets to be even larger, so they're more visible from the street, and one suggestion we keep getting is how do we get more people in the community to know about our STR hotline, so that phone number that people can call. So we are working on that as well. People have some other concerns about enforcement. Maybe they could, maybe the county could consider drive-bys for some of those frequent-flyer problem properties. They, we are working on updating our online portal to be able to alert owners and property managers and communicate with both at the same time, and then we're continuing to work with our fire departments to address a backlog and inspection scheduling, and even allow for video calls, so we're kind of trying to learn from our building department, which already conducts video calls, so we're mirroring that process. We've done some additional research from other resort and mountain towns that have pretty predominant short-term rental programs. There's some themes here, so a lot of them are broken out by tiers. Most of them are by the number of nights rented, so you'll see that theme from San Diego, and then we looked at a lot of the Colorado mountain towns. So there's a lot of that rented less than 20 nights per year is a certain category that usually comes with a lower permit fee, and then you go up from there. There's a, like, say, 21 to 60 nights per year is kind of a middle category for permit fees, and then those ones that are rented much more frequently, so more than 60, say, nights a year, those usually will see the higher permit fees, and they're trying to really break that out, and some of their caps break that out as well. So that is similar for city of Aspen, and then some at county as well. When we consider our future ordinance considerations, we are really keeping a list right now, and that is largely based on input from the Stakeholder Working Group and other input, so we are working with our fire districts to try to further clarify some of the requirements to that fire and life to that fire and life safety section of our ordinance, such as fire extinguisher requirements. We require voice-over-internet protocol or landlines, but right now, for example, we don't include a backup battery power. So, there's been suggestions for us to include small, minor revisions like that, timers for barbecues and grills. And then, like I said, we need to extend and accommodate that timeline for people to be able to get their defensible space and fire and life safety inspections. There have been considerations to break up that existing cap of 3,900 into a tiered system, whether that hap, is considered now or sometime in the future. And then, as part of the adaptive management program, and also mirrored in our proposed Tahoe Basin area plan amendments that we will be bringing forward this winter, we are proposing to reduce the cap, one-to-one, for any new lodging units that are constructed, really to try to incentivize that new lodging in the town centers. And then, we've also heard good things, like I said, about those noise monitoring technology requirements. So, these are just some of, you know, some examples of things that we might bring forward in refinements this winter. So, next steps, we will be meeting with our stakeholder working group on December 6th. So, I will be taking with my team the feedback that we heard from them, wrapping that into a potential list of refinements to the ordinance and to our program. And then, we will continue to track our short-term rental data and compare that with our visitor data. We have an online map with our consultant, Deckard, to be, that will be available this December, is what we're planning on. And that will be, that will show a map of the area that you can, you know, interact with, move around, and actually see what short-term rentals are in your neighborhood or where they're located. And then, we plan to come back to your board with updates after our next stakeholder working group with revisions, potential revisions to the ordinance. Again, not a huge overhaul, just, you know, part of that adaptive management program, cleaning up and refining and learning as we go along. So, with that, I'll transition to take any of your feedback or questions, or happy to answer anything.
Thank you, Emily. Are there board member questions or comments?
I just appreciate all the refinement. This has been a long-term process. And as we move forward, there'll probably be some more refinements as we get more information. So, really appreciate the hard work.
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll get closer to fewer refinements over time.
I have one question, and that was, I've received an email, I think, to a public comment about short-term rentals and concern about, you know, not getting in on time. But people can still obtain a short-term rental right now, correct?
Yes, we have not hit our cap. So, there are still opportunities to get a permit.
All right. Thank you. Robert?
Excellent. I love the comprehensive nature and the emphasis on adaptive management, which I think will slow some as you're going forward, because you've landed in some really good places. But great work. I think it was exactly what I was hoping for. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that as well. I think you've done a tremendous job. The work with the stakeholder group has been welcomed. As you know, they were very appreciative of being heard. A couple of questions. One, on South Lake Tahoe, that conversion to long-term renters, rentals. I know I talked to the city manager down there and asked point-blank, are those residents or are they just going to 30-day-plus rentals? And he said they didn't have that data then, but they were looking to get it. Have they refined that data? Because that makes a big difference. If it's become housing of some sort for part of the year, or if it's really just going to a different pattern of longer-term, short-term renters.
Right. You know, when I talked to them, we didn't talk about the 30-day-plus, but I can definitely ask them about that.
Yeah, that would be good to know, because then, we understand then that nexus to housing or not, if, if that's freeing it up. And then, this might be a question for Doug, but you probably know as well. I had this great experience last year that you all heard about, where my nephew's family rented a house that had no permit. And it was many thousands of dollars. And I just want to make sure we're capturing the people that aren't getting permits, that are taking revenue. And in this particular case, they never collected TOT either. So, they impacted the region, heavily impacted my house, because the storm hit, and they all moved into my house. 11 people, that was too much information. But they, you know, in researching it, they had, as you know. And, and so, those are the stories, I think, that are, you know, we really want to be able to target those people and through our technology, hope we can.
Yeah, exactly. We, our consultant, Deckard, does send us, they do that research for us, an investigation. They send us a list of those properties, and then, our team works really closely with Doug's team to go forward from the TOT side and from the STR permit side, give them an opportunity to get that permit and pay the TOT. Otherwise, there's enforcement. So, we do have that list, and we are working through that.
And especially, great. And especially, as you know, at the peak holiday, as long as I've lived here, you could rent your house at Christmas and New Year's and make, you know, pay your property taxes, pay your snow removal bill, pay whatever you'd want. And so, many, many people may kind of jump in and try to make some revenue during that time without complying with our ordinance. So, just want to make sure they're targeting, yeah, that they're targeting especially those peak seasons, because as I, as I recall, that one went back off the market, right? It was just rented for those two weeks. But...
Yeah. I'll give Doug an opportunity to chime in as well.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Doug Jastro, Revenue Services Manager with the County Executive Office, Division of Revenue Services. And with TOT, we've been in the business of enforcing compliance with the TOT ordinance for quite some time. And so, what we do, we, just to let you all know a little bit, we start off when we see a new property owner that doesn't have the primary homeowner tax exemption. We reach out to them to make sure that they're familiar with TOT, STRs. And so, that's our first outreach. And once we realize from Deckard Technologies that we have a short-term rental that's on an online
Platform.
Platform, right? That, that we reach out to them. They're currently projecting around 98% of the online rentals that are identified. And so, of those current listings that we have right now, working with the short-term rental program, we actually have 32 as of yesterday that we've identified that are out of compliance right now. So, it's a relatively small number. It's a moving target, but that's where we're at right now.
And there's no reason for them not to have the permit, because we still have availability. And so, I think for those, all of those good people that are complying and following the rules, we've got to, to make sure we, we look at those.
Absolutely. Yeah. We, what we're trying to do on the, the TOT side, we, we field these questions quite a bit, with a level playing field for the people that are complying with TOT, where others that do not, they're able to, you know, rent at a lower rate on that. So, we definitely look at that and take that seriously. So, right now, with that 32, these are, these are fresh rentals that are currently renting right now. So, working with the STR program, not only are enforcement actions on the TOT side, but receiving citations now for lack of compliance on, on both ordinance is in effect. So.
Great. Well, that's reassuring, and I appreciate the diligence. I'm sorry. I always ask about that issue, but
No, it's a good one.
I experienced it firsthand. So, it was like, okay. How much did you pay?
And, you know, with the season coming in right now, as they come online
Right.
Yeah, we'll be able to, to capture those as well.
Right. Great. Thank you. I don't see any other questions here. Are there any public comments on this item? Okay. Well, it's a first for us to have a meeting on short-term rentals and have no public comment on it. So, that must mean you're doing a tremendous job. So, thank you all. I know it's been quite an undertaking, and I really appreciate all the work, County Council's office and, and our short-term rental team, our SEDRA team, and Revenue Services. And I know our sheriff gets dragged into a lot of the complaints as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
So, I think with that, we
Cindy?
Could I have the podium for a short one minute, I promise? But since, as you mentioned this morning, this is my last
Are you gonna make us cry?
No, no.
Okay.
Hopefully, laugh.
Okay.
This is my last meeting after 28 years. As a member of the Board of Supervisors up here on the east side, and I, it's been just an incredibly rewarding experience to be here in public service. The staff that have been assigned to the east side or largely to the east side or just to projects on the east side have been terrific. The community overwhelmingly has been amazing, very patient, willing to take time to educate all of us from the lower elevation part of the county. And it's been incredibly rewarding. So, I wanted to publicly make that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Robert. And I think, on behalf of everybody in Eastern County, I, I know the entire board is, is recognized and appreciated. We don't always hear that, but I do hear from a lot of other constituents that aren't with us today, how much they appreciate the investment they see and the leadership they see with the county up here. But most especially, Robert, as you heard last night, your efforts, your patience, your wisdom, and as somebody described it, you're seeing the North Star of public service, always trying to find that path to serving our public better. So, thank you for that. So, with that, we will stand adjourned.